Good morning, or good morning. I'll tell you what, that's not starting it off right, is it? Good afternoon and welcome to City Council meeting for April 26th. We will start off with a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Higgin, Counselor Campbell.
Present.
Counselor Carlson.
Here.
Counselor Dodick.
Here.
Counselor Middleton Hope.
Present.
Counselor Palladino.
Present.
Counselor Parker. Acting Mayor Croson.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt Rempel.
Here.
And Mayor Higgin.
Present.
All present, thank you.
Thank you. Start with the land acknowledgement statement. The City of Lethbridge acknowledges that we're gathered on the lands of the Blackfoot people of the Canadian Plains and pays respect to the Blackfoot people past, present, and future while recognizing and respecting their cultural heritage, beliefs, and relationships to the land. The City of Lethbridge is also home to the Métis Nation of Alberta Region III. I'll start off with bouquets and I'll start to my far right, Counselor Middleton Hope.
Well, thank you, your worship. I actually, for a change, have two. One is to the Empanada Festival that occurred at the multicultural centre on Saturday. It was an excellent opportunity to try cuisine and music of Latin America and I really enjoyed my time with my family there. So, kudos to the organizers of that particular festival. I look forward to it next year. The second is in which I enlisted the help of Mayor Higgin, Chief Mahidaze, as well as Chief Adair, in the C2C for PTSD. This is an important program for all first responders. A young man by the name of Chad Kennedy, who's an Alberta sheriff, who has also been diagnosed with PTSD, is walking across the country, generating or trying to generate revenue for research as well as for assistance from members suffering from this horrible affliction. Chad currently is at the Saskatchewan border, having come through our city last Friday, and I actually got the mayor to walk up the Stafford Hill from the river bottom all the way up to Stafford Drive, and he managed to do it without needing oxygen from the fire department, so. It is a really worthwhile initiative. You can go online, CSEA2C for PTSD, and they are accepting donations. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you very much, that was a great time. Acting Mayor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. I know I won't be the only one who will have this on mind, but condolences to the family and friends of Jan Foster. We have lost an amazing citizen and it would be impossible to list everything she did for our community. The other thing I'd like to make mention of, it is Volunteer Week, so thank you to the volunteers across our community. You make us better and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Croson. Counselor Palladino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to say congratulations to Douglas Bergen and his partners for breaking ground on the largest residential construction project in Lethbridge history at 102 Senegue Drive. And the Phase 1 of that project is something like $62 million construction value, and good on the council of the day that approved that.
Thank you, Counselor Palladino. Counselor Parker. Nothing. And we'll move over to my far left, Counselor Dodick.
Nothing for me.
All right, Counselor Campbell.
Nothing today.
Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. As the weather is turning, and I know that about a month ago, when it was so gorgeous outside, we were all on the golf courses and dreaming about starting our gardens, I want to do a big shout out to the organizers of CD Saturday Lethbridge at Casa. Everyone got to exchange seeds, attend some seminars, and a bunch of exhibitions, and I know, let's fingers crossed, that the weather holds and we can all get our gardens in. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt Rempel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few things from me this week. I was honored to spend some time speaking with the Sukkintshin staff at their annual retreat. Thank you to that group and that team of volunteers for all that they work that they do for our community. Congratulations to Michelle and her team at Nikiyuko Japanese Garden and the opening of their memory capture pod and time map project. Please do take the opportunity to visit the new Bunka Centre and check these two projects out. And a shout out to the Police Commission and Police Services and all the residents who attended the town hall last week. It was great to see the community participation and I look forward to both the Commission and Police Services hosting more of these. Thank you.
Awesome. Many things here, a couple to add here. Had the opportunity of attending Green Acres' 60th anniversary, although it was 62 years, because of COVID, they had their 60th anniversary here this couple of weeks back, and it was very well attended, and we thank so much for what Green Acres does in our community. Also attended Recovery Capital Summit in Calgary, and it was sold out, oversold out with 850 registered delegates across Canada for addiction and recovery. It's the largest conference ever around recovery in Canada's history, and they're looking forward to doubling that next year, so it was a really great conference to be a part of. And I'd be remiss if I did not mention Alberta Treaty Hockey Tournament. That was in our community last week, and it was 107 teams, which used up pretty much every single one of our ice surfaces, as well as it packed the hotels, so all of the business that brought to our community. It was great to see that, them host that, and we look forward to hopefully doing that again in the future. And the last thing, Hurricanes playoffs. We, our team was up in Edmonton for the first two of seven and unfortunately fell short, and so we're down two games in a series of seven. The first game is tonight in Lethbridge. Tickets are still available, and that does start at 7 o'clock. And best of luck to them, obviously. I have a resolution from Acting Mayor Croson, the adoption of the agenda, that the agenda of the regular meeting of City Council on April 26, 2022 be adopted as presented. Madam Clerk, are there any amendments to the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. There is one revision to the agenda. Item 14.4, the NMAC Centre update, which is a confidential report, will now be moved to the public agenda, and it will be moved to Section 8 under Committee Submissions, and it will be entitled Item 8.1.3. So if that gets adopted by council, if we could have a little recess, and we'll add that to the public agenda. Thank you for your consideration, council.
Acting Mayor Croson.
I'll call the question on the amended agenda.
Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? So carries. And we'll just take a quick five-minute break to have that added to the agenda. There we go. Thank you very much for your patience. We've had that to our agenda, and we will move on with the consent agenda as amended here. Consent agenda, or I'm sorry, yes. 4.0 moved by Deputy Mayor Schmidt, Deputy Mayor Schmidt Rempel. It's really early too, right? Consent agenda, 4.0. Be resolved that the minutes of the following meeting of City Council be approved and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the same. City Council Meeting 2022-0405. And further be resolved that City Council receive the information, the status of directed resolutions 2022-0426 with the following amendments. The council defer the date of the return of the toxic e-waste eco-drop-off through the Economic Standing Policy Committee from April 13, 2022 to May 24, 2022. The council defer the date of the return from the City of Lethbridge Curbside Organics Programme through the Economic Standing Policy Committee from April 13, 2022 to May 24, 2022. Further be resolved that City Council approve the recommendations contained within the following Standing Policy Committee reports. 2021 City of Lethbridge Annual Report, Proposed Update to the Outline Plan Approval and Amendment Process, Waste and Recycling Annual Report, Land Banking Strategy, Operational Review, Fire and EMS, Proposed Public Places Bylaw, Light Nuisance Report. And further be resolved that City Council provide first reading to the following bylaws. Bylaw 6280, Public Places Bylaw, and 6285, The Streets Bylaw. Bylaw 6330, Amendment to Bylaw 6300, wait, amendment, oh, the amendments are 6300, 47495197580138995277and6000. Read the elimination of the Municipal Planning Commission. And Bylaw 6354, Land Use Bylaw Amendment, read 1205, 30th Street West, and 1220, 30th Street West. And Bylaw 6358, 2022 Property Tax and Supplementary Property Tax Bylaw. And Bylaw 6359, 2022 Pre-Authorized Tax Installment Pre-Payment Plan. And Bylaw 6360, 2022 Downtown BIA Tax Rate Bylaw. And further be resolved that City Council schedule a public hearing on Tuesday, May 24, 2022 at 4 p.m. for the following bylaws. Bylaw 6330 and Bylaw 6354. Counsel, or Deputy Mayor Schmidt Rempel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So certainly, it's quite a bit in this week's consent agenda. Our SPCs were very busy the past few weeks, and it was good to see the community participation at those SPCs. There are a few items I'm going to highlight, and certainly the first two items there that were deferred, just a reminder to the community, to mark your calendars, if you would like to speak with each of those, you are invited to come forward to do that. You'll see the 2021 City of Lethbridge Annual Report in this agenda. This will be posted to the city's website after approval, and out there for everyone to enjoy. It's a requirement of the MGA, offers highlights of what the City of Lethbridge worked on throughout 2021, as well as financial statements and performance. It also describes some of the city's major financial policies, offers an assessment of our general economic condition. 2021 was the third year of our four-year 2019-2022 operating budget, and the city continues to achieve a strong financial position, and we are in a good position to make the most of our opportunities to move successfully into 2022. There's a proposed update and amendment to our outline plan approval process. Outline plans provide a more specific planning framework for an area included in an area structure plan. This also ties to the first reading of Bylaw 6330, which also includes the amendment to Bylaw 600, elimination of the Municipal Planning Commission. The option of this has been developed in collaboration with the building industry and Land Development Association and city administration. The change allows council a further enhanced level of input, it was the most expedient, and has the least amount of complications for the applicant. A public hearing for this will be scheduled for May 24. Waste and Recycling provided its annual report to the Civic Works SPC. Will also be providing first readings to Bylaw 6280, Public Spaces Bylaw, and Bylaw 6285, The Streets Bylaw. These two are related. The Public Spaces Bylaw contains elements of The Streets Bylaw. The Public Spaces Bylaw outlines expected behaviour in public spaces, and it also improves the breadth of where the bylaw is applicable. The intent of this bylaw is not to persecute individuals, but rather clearly define expected behaviour and educate the public as to community standards. And in establishing the Public Places Bylaw, changes need to be made to 6285, The Streets Bylaw. And the new Streets Bylaw will also allow for mobile vending, sidewalk vending, minor, major, parkland patios, and temporary encroachments with the updated guidelines based on best practices. We have first readings for 2022 tax bylaws. These happen every year. A note for Bylaw 6358-2022, the 2022 assessments reflect market values as of July 1, 2021. 2020 COVID caused downward shift in market value. 2021 saw a strong recovery to property values, and like most communities in Alberta, Lethbridge property values increased in 2021. Increases were inconsistent with some property types seeing larger increases than others. On December 14, 2020, City Council approved amendments to the operating budget to reduce the municipal tax increases to 0% for 2021 and 2022. Because there was a 0% budget increase and market values went up, the corresponding municipal tax rate dropped in all categories. Because residential had larger overall increases in market value, their mill rate dropped more than non-residential, which increased the non-residential ratio from 2.44, increased it from 2.44 to 2.49. The typical house of 285,000 saw no municipal tax increase as a result. So just also things that are out of the city's control. The provincial educational tax levy increased by approximately 1.34 million in 2022. The residential class increased about 1.34 million or 4.8%. While the tax levy related to the non-residential class decreased about 2,900 or 0.03%. This results in increased taxes for most ratepayers to fund education. The Green Acres Society budget also increased by a net amount of approximately 91,000 or 4.36%. The increase is required to adequately fund affordable housing for senior citizens and is responsive to the needs of seniors, their families, and the community. This results in increased taxes to fund green acres. As a result of these, the typical house will see an overall increase of about $23. So just as a reminder, the city did maintain its 0% increase, however, the marketplace, COVID, and resulting shift in market value, education levy, and increase for green acres are out of the city's control. Bylaw 6359-2022 establishes the 2022 Tax Installment Pre-Payment Plan tip for the 2023 Property Taxes Update, and discount on prepayment of property taxes, and updates current penalty write-off due date. And Bylaw 6360, 2022 establishes the 2022 Downtown Business Improvement Area Tax Rate and sets the due dates for payment of these taxes. These tax bylaws will be back for second and third readings on May 10, where they'll need to be approved by City Council as notices for income taxes will be coming out on May 11. If any of my council colleagues have any questions or would like to say anything further?
Questions? I do see Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for the very thorough explanation of the consent agenda. I have a question, you've sort of answered it in your statement. Item 4.8 and 410, Bylaw 6285 and 6280, they seem different on the consent agenda. One just talks about the proposed Public Places Bylaw, the other actually talks about Bylaw 6285. But I think you've clarified that it is for 4.8, 6280, it's going forward, and it will have, it is coming forward for first reading as part of this consent agenda, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Two other questions on that. Will there be public hearings on these bylaws? Or now that they, if they receive first reading today, should the public merely, if they have any questions, concerns, comments, provide those directly to council?
That'll direct that question to Mr. Fox. Do we have public hearings on these ones?
They're not scheduled, so I was assuming they weren't coming forward for a public hea, oh, thank you, Mr. Lowen.
There's no legal requirement for public hearings, and I think with the current SBC structure, the goal is to have those, the public input at committee level for more fulsome participation.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to actually commend, if I can, the folks that did the participation on those proposed bylaws. I was at several committees where they were discussed, and I've seen changes to them based on the community discussion, so I appreciate that. Final question is in 4.80, it does refer to Public Places Bylaw and Public Spaces Bylaw. I just think we need to make sure that we have clarity. The bylaw itself is the Public Places Bylaw, but the reports talk about the Public Spaces Bylaw, so I thought I'd just point that out. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any further questions? I see Acting Mayor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. I just have a correction to 4.3. If this is passed, it becomes part of the historical record, and I, forgive me for not noting this earlier. It is on the first document that is submitted by myself as Chair of Audit Standing Policy Committee. I am not the chair, Counselor Dodick is. So if we could just make that amendment in the record, it would be appreciated.
Thank you for that, and we're a great catch. All right, any further questions? See no further questions, any debate? No debate. Deputy Mayor Schmidt Rempel.
I'll call the question.
Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? So carries. Thank you. So we don't have any presentations, official business, we move to bylaws 7.1.2, 7.1.1, we can't do quite yet, as we're having a public hearing on that at 4 o'clock. 7.1.2, Bylaw 6357, a bylaw to repeal, Bylaw 3896, the smoking bylaw. Be it resolved that Bylaw 6357, a bylaw to repeal, Bylaw 3896, the smoking bylaw be given second reading. Counselor Campbell.
Just so everyone knows, the province had created comprehensive regulations respecting the sale, advertising, and consumption of tobacco and vaping products supported with robust education campaigns, with staff allocated for inspection and enforcement of the affected regulations. The current City of Lethbridge smoking bylaw is much less restrictive and has provisions that conflict with the restrictions under the provincial legislation, and in all instances, the more restrictive provisions prevail, and as such, the City of Lethbridge has relied on provincial regulations since 2008. The current City of Lethbridge bylaw has therefore become redundant, and to remove any confusion between the bylaw and the provincial legislation are recommended, and that's why the smoking bylaw should be repealed. I'll open it up if there's any other questions.
Create the thorough explanation on that, thank you, Counselor Campbell. Is there any questions? Counselor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. My question would be to Mr. Lowen, the city solicitor. Sometimes it is a good idea for us to have a bylaw, even though there is provincial legislation, because sometimes we do cover things. And I know we've had concerns expressed to us that if we are repealing this one, should we be looking at a new smoking bylaw that looks more to protecting children, looks at vaping, looks at public spaces? Is there a need for a new bylaw? Or if we get rid of this one, are we then done with having any bylaw at the city level?
I don't see any legal need to keep the current bylaw, as noted in the report, it is redundant with respect to provincial legislation. There is an opportunity, if council so desired, to legislate in areas that the province hasn't. For example, some examples that might come to mind would include e-cigarettes or what's known as vaping. You could pass bylaws with more strict restrictions on cannabis consumption than the province has. You could regulate what are called shisha or hookah lounges, as some cities have done. But I think that it would be most effective if it was council's desire to regulate in any of those areas, to institute that as a new piece of work with a new bylaw, as opposed to trying to amend to this. as opposed to trying to amend this one, which is an artifact of a, of a different time when the province was going through the change that reduced public tobacco consumption.
So repealing this bylaw gives us a clean slate? And if any councillor wants to, we can bring forward a new proposal for a bylaw that would approach the new concerns, is what you're saying?
Yes, i- if council wanted to regulate those things, they could do so at any time by bringing it forward. And, and we would work with regulatory services in Mr. Fox's area to develop appropriate standards and bring that, a draft back for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Higgin.
Thank you. Any further questions? Debate? I see councillor Dodick.
I have to, I will be supporting this, but I will do so sadly, because it was in 2007 that I brought this bylaw forward, because the province said in no way were they going to pass a smoking or a provincial-wide smoking ban. And a year later, they did. But I will be supporting this, but sadly, I will say goodbye to this bylaw.
Thank you very much. I remember all of the wholesome discussions back in the day, so thank you for that. So with that, turn it back to councillor Campbell.
In memoriam. We'll get someone to sing for us, but unless there's anything else, I'll call the question.
I think that's a question. Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. Thank you. And for a third reading, be it resolved, a bylaw 6357, a bylaw to repeal, bylaws 3896, the smoking bylaw be given third reading, and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same. Councillor Campbell?
Sad goodbye. Call for the vote.
Question's been called. All in favor? Opposed? Carries. Thank you. Next, move to committee, committee submissions. And moved by acting Mayor Croson, Chair of the Civic Works Standing Policy Committee, City Link Network Redesign 8.1.1. Be resolved, the city council, receive the attached report and presentation for information. And two, direct the city, the City Link Network redesign becomes permanent with quarterly adjustments being made to reflect feedback, changing travel patterns, and metric indicators. And three, allocate $350,000 to transit to work with the committee to fill any gaps and review the present to the civi, and review and present to the Civic Works Standing Policy Committee on a semi-annual basis. Councillor Croson, acting Mayor Croson, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Just want to give a bit of a summary. I know this is a submission, but just to give us an idea of how we got here. City Link began 25th August, 2021, but has been in limbo as council has not, as it has not been made permanent by council. City Link has been years in the development. It's based on the Transit Master Plan, and it's designed with the objective of improving efficiency and effectiveness of our transit network. Ridership of our transit network has been dropping over the past several decades, and transit required a reboot. The metrics are now showing increased ridership under City Link. Customer per revenue hour is up by 76.2%. Weekday ridership is up 55.8%, and on-time performance is up 9.2%. Lethbridge Transit also has a policy, if this is made permanent, of continuous improvement, and will apply it to City Link. In the report given to council are also the budget implications of any choices that council makes. As part of this motion, you will see a $350,000 suggestion of reallocation back to transit. That was determined by Civic SBC through discussion, but is something that could be open for debate as to the actual number, and maybe something that comes out through questioning, questions to administration today. So that is what is before us with this motion.
I do see some questions. Councillor Dodick?
Yes, I'm proposing that each item be voted separately. So item ones, number two and number three each separately. And I believe councillor Carlson will likely have an amendment with respect, or a proposed amendment to item number three, but I'll let him speak to that.
First off, we'll divide then, one, two, and three. Is that? Yeah, is there a mo, that's a motion to divide? Obviously councillor Dodick, all right. And seconded by councillor Carlson. All in, any debate on that? Questions, debate?
I just comment that, you know, members of council may be in agreement with one and not another. So that's why I'm asking for council support to divide it into three.
Thank you. I do see questions in here. Is this on the motion to divide?
Debate.
For debate after? Okay, so with that, call for the vote. All in favor?
No, I want to debate. Can we debate? Can you debate it?
Oh, you're gonna debate the, the motion to divide? I'm sorry, go ahead councillor Parker.
Thank you, and I'm gonna be voting for it. Usually I always support a motion to divide, but a lot of my decisions will be based on how the other ones go. So I would like to see it collectively. So for that reason, I will be voting against division.
Right, right. Councillor Milton Hope, was that on the motion to divide?
No.
Okay, so with that, all in favor? Any opposed? That is. To one, you got that? Okay, all right. Next, so we've got these divided. Now, prior to moving on number one, is there, councillor Carlson, did you have something to add yet? Okay, so we'll start off with the first. Be it resolved that city council receive the attached report and presentation for information. Any questions? Councillor Milton Hope, are you still in there? Not for this? Okay. Questions on that? Debate? Seeing none? Can I have someone make the motion to?
My motion, even if it's divided. So I'll call the que-
Acting Mayor Croson, call the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. And number two, sorry, acting Mayor Croson?
Mr. Mayor, can I just make a request? Is it possible to vote on number three before we vote on number two?
Is that, is that fine with anyone if that's? I don't think we need to have a motion to do that.
But just in regards, that's a request, so.
Request, number three first? I'm seeing that that's. General consent?
Thank you.
All right. So number, number three, that allocate, be it resolved, the city council allocate $350,000 to transit to work with the committee to fill any gaps and review and present to the Civic Works Standing Policy Committee on a semi-annual basis. And start off with acting Mayor Croson, if you have anything to?
As I noted in my opening, the 350K came out of Civic SBC, because that is what was cut from the transit budget. And I know there will be some concerns about what amount and whether that amount needs to be done now or in advance of November. But when you were, we were listening at Civic Works SBC, there are several things that the public would be requesting in the transit that would require money now. How much would be something, of course, that we could get through questions of tra, of administration? Some of the things that we are looking at is if Civic, if we make this permanent, we do need to do a communication strategy. If we move ahead with this, there are some of our stops that need to be moved. So there are some things, some capital, some operating that does need to be done. And so the idea behind this part of the motion was to ensure that we have money that transit can use to make sure we improve our transit system on behalf of our community.
Thank you. Now I do have in the queue, I don't know what's to this, councillor Milton Hope, are you, any comments on this or on the, on the resolution as a whole?
No, actually on the 350,000 and locations and so forth. But I, I will see to councillor Parker, he has a burning issue that he'd like to address.
You're good. Okay, then I'll, I'll wait for debate. All right, and your questions, councillor Carlson, are you in for debate or questions?
I was actually going to make a referral motion.
Referral motion, all right.
This be referred to our upcoming operating budget deliberations this fall?
Motion for that? And we do vote on that one, correct? Okay, clarification, councillor Parker?
Maybe my question to the city manager, to the city treasurer is, the federal government allocated, I think, over a million dollars to, for transit. And could we use the funding that the federal government gave us to help fill the gaps or the 350,000 dollars? Could that be used for that?
To members of council and to councillor Parker, that funding, which is the rest of our funding that was received for 1.2 million, 34,000 and change, was specific in regards to what its intent is for. So it's very specific in the sense that it's for transit itself. However, it's for the actual cost for either transit capital, personal protective equipment, supplies, and so forth that have been affected through the, you know, COVID, COVID pieces. So it's not, wouldn't be directly eligible just for the 350,000 for operations.
But could some of that funds be used to allocate money that we were gonna spend already, that which, which would in turn free up 350,000 for services?
That is correct. So you could apply this grant in here if there was fair revenue or, or taxation that it freed up. That's taxation revenue or fair revenue surplus could be applied as a one-time funding. So once again, this is one-time, not ongoing, but it's, it could be applied for that.
So my last and follow-up question to that is, if this resolution was to pass as it is, would you, would it be inferred that you would allocate that money to fill the gap of 350,000? Or would you need an additional directional resolution to use that funding source from the federal government?
So here again, we would have to use the, the, the funding directly for the eligibility costs. The, the resolution would have to be specific that any tax savings or surpluses that came, were generated through that be directed to be used for this one-time 350,000.
Thank you.
Once again, just one time. So if it's an ongoing nature, you'd want to, you want to take that into a different funding posa, pot.
Thank you.
All right, to introduce the amendment here, councillor Carlson?
Thank you. I think, I think it just makes sense. I think some-
Referral, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the referral motion, I think the questions by councillor Parker highlighted it, that A, there's no funding source attached to this. It's just 350,000, pulled a number out of, out of the air to attach a, a number to say, here's 350,000. We didn't say from where, we didn't say for what. We heard in committee, at the SPC committee, that there is no current committee active that this refer, this item number three refers to, to work with the committee to fill in these gaps. It's all very vague. And I think the last thing we want to do is say, here's 350,000. To do vague things with no committee, no oversight. I think it just makes sense to do this in a, in a thoughtful, thoughtful manner, but also following process. If we give these dollars to start implementing things piecemeal on a one-off, as Mr. Matthews said, where's the dollars coming from to fund these going forward? If we go out and hire transit operators, and we hire buses to do quick fix on something without a, a plan in place, that could lead to all sorts of issues. I think the, the reason that I think forwarding this to the operating budget makes sense is it gives our transit administration time to build the committee that is talked about in this resolution, to work with them and to bring back some thoughtful plans. When asked what dollar, what this would do, giving the 350,000, I believe the response is, well, we can do things with it, but there was no real plan. And I don't think that's, that, that makes sense to council, to say, here's 350,000 to do stuff. That's just on the operational side. It was talked about that this 350,000 was gonna be needed for the capital expenses. I believe my questions in committee was, were these already, these capital expenses about the bus shelters, the new signage, et cetera, were these already in place? And unless I hear differently, I was told that those were already funded. So they didn't need the extra 350,000 for those capital expenses that were talked about. All I'm asking here is that we do our due diligence, we follow process, and we be thoughtful. And that we get a plan so we know how the 350,000, or it could be 200,000, it could be a million dollars to fill these gaps. But I think hearing a plan makes sense. So we have something, Mr. Sanderson and your team are here, so I'll say to hold accountable, to say, you told us this was gonna do X, Y, Z, here's the dollars, show us. Rather than, here's the dollars, do what you want. That's not the way. Yeah, I, I'm sure it'd be lovely. I'd love to get that too. But that's not the way I like to do council business. I like to have a plan. I like to know what I'm paying for or our citizens are paying for. 350,000 could give every citizen in Lethbridge one and a half free rides on transit. It could buy a whole bunch of free bus passes, which, as you know, I've been trying to get to our low-income, vulnerable population for decades and constantly been voted down on. So I would like to see the dollars done in a responsible manner. So that's why I'm asking for a referral. Thank you.
On the referral motion, is there any more debate? Councillor Parker?
Thank you very much. And I was being part of that SBC, and I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, the people that are on that committee, we were told and we were asked the question that a lot of the gaps that we heard from the community, and one particular right in the audience right here, center-right, there were a lot of issues regards to people falling through the cracks. And we asked the questions, would this 350,000 go a long way in helping these individuals in areas of need? And I do believe Mr. Dorgson and his team said that it would go a long way in fulfilling that need. Correct me if I'm wrong in that, Mr. Dorgson, am I right on that? That 350,000 could be used to allocate, filling in these needs in the community? Yeah, just referring back to the SBC to give some context. Mr. Sanderson, sorry.
I'm sorry, thank you. Through, through your worship to councillor Parker. Absolutely, 350,000, truly any amount of funding, we, we would see allocated as towards providing much the mobility for the community.
And my second question is the consequences to the decision of the past council to cutting 350. When the consequences was the upheaval in the community and a lot of the people feeling like they lost a lot of their services. Am I correct that you had to kind of redesign things with the limited amount of funds that you had?
Yes, I would say that, that it wasn't simply just the, the, the elimination of the funds, which was a, was a byproduct of it, but, but simply the redesign and implementation of, of demand response service also as well.
Thank you, thank you very much. And my last question to the, may you, thanks, Mr. Sanderson. My question to the city manager, to Director of Community Services. The question regarding a committee, I know we talked about striking up some kind of citizen committee with, with combination of operators, citizens, administration, and possibly a member of council that isn't official, but I do believe you already have a committee in place, don't we, who reviews this?
Excuse me, through the chair, we do, we do have a committee, but it's not all-encompassing as was discussed in the SBC. So in order to create a committee of council, we would have to come up with the terms of reference, create the bylaw, and I would have to refer to city solicitor about the amount of time creating that bylaw would take. And then once that committee is, is formed, then we could continue. As far as the 350,000, if it was allocated as one-time funding, it would only be for almost like a temporary funding for this year. So we, we have provided some options on a supplemental report on what some of those options could be, but that would be ongoing if we were to make those changes.
Yeah, what you're saying is the 350,000 if it's allocated here would be kind of bridge funding. And then if any ongoing, would have to be approved through the operating budget?
Correct. If we receive 350 to supplement the budget for 2022, we would have pressures coming forward for operating budget in, in the fall.
And would it help your case for a member of council to bring a resolution forward at a subsequent meeting in regards to striking up a committee with kind of some guidelines? And so it helps you folks out? Would that help you out?
Sure, I, I think we do have the direction here is to work with the transit committee. So we'd be bringing back a terms of reference and, and that to council. I, I think we heard that loud and clear at the SBC. So we, we will be touching base on that. But if you'd like to make a, a motion on us.
No, that makes me feel great. So, so, but there will be citizens, like users on that committee. Am I correct?
Correct. Once the terms of reference would be made, we'd bring it back to council. And it would also include a bylaw, if it's a committee of council. So that, that would be the process. Now to create a committee, I'm guessing, again, I would have to rely on the solicitor for this, but I'm guessing it would take to the fall to, to get all of that done and the bylaw through. But I would have to ask Mr. Lowen to comment on that.
Would it take that long, Mr. Lowen? To strike up like 10 people or 12 people to make some recommendations?
Drafting of the bylaw isn't the, the time-consuming part. Once we have complete instructions, including who's to be there, what their precise jurisdiction is, those procedural requirements the clerks have reviewed and that addressed any of their concerns, then it would have to come back for three readings. So in terms of knowing who the right people are and how, how that representation is, I think, I, I would see that as taking the longest part of the work. With complete instructions, it would take under a week for our office to draft something like that. Assuming there were no other fires of greater urgency.
That's wood. Thank you.
So on that, sorry, through the chair, if that's the case, then we, we could probably have it before fall and, and have it up and running.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Parker. Continuing debate, councillor Campbell?
Sorry, I'm-
Are questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah, just maybe Mr. Sanderson, I, I imagine, just thinking of, if we turn, turn down 350,000 today, ultimately, what is the consequence of not having that 350,000? What does it do to the, the ridership or to the people that are affected today?
Through your worship to councillor Campbell, thank you for that question. At the end of the day, we've provided four potential options for, should we have received the 350,000, then what we would- then what we would do with it. Those four options were determined upon our initial design of CityLink, and those things that were value engineered out of the process as we, as we developed it. And the impact of, of all of those are, are in that document. And they range anywhere from, from providing greater transit options for our, our riders that already exist, to potentially some, some new options or some different options for, for our riders. The thing with transit is it's very geographically based and, and really where the, where council would decide, or, or should the committee at some point in time decide in order to allocate those and, and which way to do it. And a lot of those are policy decisions rather than, than those based upon our, my expertise as a, as a transit manager.
So on the flip side, if you were given some more time to think about where we want to go, does that, that, does that give you pause to really, really make some major improvements?
Through your worship to Counselor Campbell, again, any funding that, that transit receives, we're committed to putting into service for the community, whether it be $500 or, or $350,000. And the, the needs of the transit in the community are, are quite evident. And the Lethbridge Transit Master Plan paid, paid an initial step at around $2.5 million. So what we would like the opportunity to do would be to work for, with the committee and come back with what that actual number looks like, which, again, my, my prediction as, as a transit manager would probably be higher than a $350,000 thing. That being said, I, I, I don't want to say that $350,000 is not going to have an impact because it, because it absolutely would as well.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Counselor Middleton-Hope?
Thank you, your worship. And this is to Mr. Sanderson again. So in the report itself, Mr. Sanderson, and I appreciate Mr. Matthews' comment in regards to the location of funding through the Restore program, but I noticed a number of options. And you just alluded to the four options that are contemplated in the report. Each have a different price tag. For example, option number two provides for an additional ridership of 90,000. We're looking at additional costs and so forth. But the, the bottom, the bottom line, and please, Counselor Carlson, keep me painting in the lines if I get outside the lines, but it indicated that there's a, a cost of that of $375,000. So is that in addition to the 350, or is that in place of the 350?
Through your worship to Counselor Middleton-Hope, thank you, thank you for that question, and I apologize for the, for, for any confusion that would have cost.
My confusion?
I'm sorry.
It's my confusion.
Each of those options are separately priced.
Okay.
So they are, they are in effect options. And what we wanted to do for, for council was, was to provide, given the $350,000, one of these options could be done. Again, if we, if council would make the decision to give us $1.4 million, we could do all of them. But that is, each of them are priced separately.
I perhaps clarify this for me. Is the $350,000 that's part of this motion, is it the right amount?
Your worship to Counselor Middleton-Hope, the right amount is always a bit of a tough question, because how transit is funded is truly a policy decision of council. What it does is it would restore the commitment that, that, that had pre-existed that council made to transit. And if you were to ask me again, as a, as a transit advocate and transit professional, I would say what the Transit Master Plan advocates, which is of a long-term budget of, of double what we have now is the right amount.
Double $350,000 or double $12 million?
Well, double $16 million. $12 million has our revenue out of it, so.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry. It doesn't provide me with any greater clarification as I look at this motion, and we're going to be asked to vote on it. Is it the right amount, or should we be looking at a different amount? Or will be, will be, be looking at a different amount in the future?
Through your worship to Counselor Middleton-Hope, again, the, the level that transit is funded at is a, is a political decision and is a policy decision. From my expertise as a transit, as a transit manager, what my mandate is to provide the best transit system for the level of funding that we receive. We feel that we've done that with CityLink at the, at the existing level minus $350,000. Given an additional $350,000, our recommendation would be to put it into the service that would have the greatest impact for the community. Should council decide to give us an additional $500,000, that $500,000 would also go into being that service. Is there a right amount of transit funding for the community? Probably, but that, but that is more of a political decision rather than a, a technical decision.
Through, through the chair, I may add on to Mr. Sanderson's comments there. Is the 350 was brought forward as that was the amount that was cut out of the budget? So it isn't tied to any one initiative right now. What transit administration did is brought forward some options. So they would be different prices, and that would be ongoing funding if we decided to move forward with one of those options. Again, it wouldn't be one-time funding. As we're debating right now, is it ongoing or is it one-time funding? If it was, came out of the grant, as Mr. Matthews explained, that would be one-time funding, and then we would have to talk about it at operating. If it's tied to having the committee too, we would have to strike up the committee, and it may be one of those options for the remainder of this year for 350, but it would also cause an ongoing operational pressure. I, I hope that helps.
I also have, the city, Mr. City Manager, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, if I could help maybe bring a little bit of clarity between the, the restore funding, which is $1,234,000 and the 350. So if we looked at last year's budget, we don't have our forecast to year end for 2022 yet, as far as transit, unless Tim knows something I don't. But, so if we looked at last year's, we ended up in a $1.3 million deficit for transit. So there's your one-time, one-time funding approach. That's the restore. If that softened a bit, there's your $1.2 million this year. That's one time. Then ongoing, that's where out of Civic Works Administration came forward with three different options to consider based on the, the direction of $350,000. Here are three different independent options you could consider for use for that 350. That 350 is outside of the budget process, and it, the one direction that was mentioned is giving a little more time to work through that, putting it into the budget process is one piece. But if we were to be given that 350, here are the three things, any of which council could choose to, to allocate that funding to, but it would create an ongoing pressure should that, should that line item that's chosen continue throughout the operating budget. Does that help provide any clarity?
It does. I'm still confused about the options. So from your perspective, then the additional options, we're looking at additional funding coming forward?
That's correct. So the options, so I will just read out the options. So number one, option number one, eliminate fares for seniors and youth. That option, budgetary impact $330,000 to $460,000. If you were to choose that option, that would be an ongoing cost.
That clarifies it. Good. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Acting Mayor Croson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgins. Question to the city manager or designate. At Civic Works SPC, through my emails, et cetera, there are a few main concerns that I'm hearing from the public, not just in regards to CityLink and the redesign, but just in general. One is communication of transit. A lot of people do not have access to online sources. They're looking for a communication plan and better understanding of our transit system. Two, fare reduction, which we were talking about earlier. Three, ensuring proper coverage. And another one, and I'm hearing this constantly, and I know it's more of the on-demand, not CityLink, but to the public, they don't care. To them, it's all transit, is about the need for car seats. And if the city were to provide car seats, et cetera, there's a cost. So those things, communication plan, fare reduction, ensuring we have coverage, figuring out how to get around the car seats, are those things that we could do without any extra money in transit? Or if we move ahead and this referral goes forward, would we be telling the community all these things have to wait until January?
Through your worship, Mr. Sanderson, did you want to speak to that?
Thank you, your worship. Through you to Deputy Mayor, or Acting Mayor Croson. Thank you for the question. When we designed the CityLink, the CityLink and budgeted for CityLink, we also did budget for a lot of the, the infrastructure work in order to complete the project. When a decision wasn't made on the future of CityLink back in January, we stopped with a lot of that progress. So we still do have sufficient budget to complete a lot of the infrastructure work going forward. Additionally, council has provided us with $3 million capital dollars for the establishment of city hubs, which are integral part of the CityLink, CityLink product, which hasn't actually started yet. That would also go a long way towards a lot of the communication issues that we have. One of the big challenges for those of you that ride the bus and know, know this, is not knowing what time the bus is coming or having an idea of doing it. And, and giving that information to our customers is truly capital dollars. They're, they're not necessarily related to operating. The, the third piece, and I, I hope I get all of them, is relation to, to child seats on, on our vehicles. That isn't a city decision. That's a, as a result of provincial, provincial legislation on, on the Highway Traffic Act. That does not allow us from, from not allowing child seats. We are happy to report that we have discovered that there are seats offered that, that are boot convertible seats. We are ordering new vehicles, new replacement vehicles for some of the vehicles that we use for the demand response, and those will be having booster seats in them. It'll take about six months in order for us to get delivery of those vehicles, but, but we do intend to take care of that as well. Again, operating funds aren't really going to be required to that. Most of those things that really are capital, capital related.
So what I'm hearing to summarize is most of the concerns that we're hearing from the community, if we just put CityLink in permanent, that stuff will get moving, and the referral that could then be used to move till November to improve the system, if that is council's decision.
Through your worship to Acting Mayor Croson, I would never want to say that, that we're going to take care of virtually everybody's concerns, but I do feel that at least a lot of the concerns that we're seeing are related to those capital investments, to really the, the experience that a person has when they're, when they're taking the bus. And, and I, I think that given enough time, we have the funding and the budget in order to take care of those issues. But again, we're not, we're in a continuous improvement process. And, and as we do that, we are going to discover other issues that we're going to have to take care of. And, and we're, we're just committed to continuously improving. But at this point in time, the additional budget won't help with those issues.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Croson. Next, we have Counselor Dodik.
I'm waiting in queue to debate in favor of Counselor Carlson's referral motion. So I don't know if we're still in questions or debate at this point.
Questions? I do have Deputy Mayor Schmidt-Rempel. Is that a question or debate? Question? Go ahead.
Just one question out of the four options that we have here, Mr. Sanderson. Which, you provide the four options certainly, which of those ones do you think, or, or does your group feel are most important, most emergent, to be added to what the permanent CityLink plan will address once that's, once we're able to make that permanent?
Through your worship to Deputy Mayor Schmidt-Rempel, always difficult for us to ask what are, what we think is most important, because a, a, a lot of these are, are again, political and policy decisions. What we attempted to provide was really what the impact is going to be to the community of these. And taking a look at, at, at the four options, the option that it would have the greatest impact to the community, which would mean the num, the, the one, the one option that would have, would increase our ridership the most, would be increasing the frequency along the golden blue lines. That being said, that isn't something that is necessarily noticeable or, or transparent. On the flip side, the one that is probably going to have the greatest social benefit to it would be the elimination of fares for seniors and youth under 18. And again, it's not going to affect as many riders. It's probably not going to generate as much ridership. It's not going to make the buses more full like the other option would. But again, it's going to have a gigantic impact for the, for the community. The other two options, I would say, again, from my personal perspective, are, are, are more seconds. They are going to, because they're going to be more focused on, on smaller geographic, and they're going to have a larger impact for, for a small amount of people. So.
Thank you.
Do I have anyone else for questions? Or I have just everyone's in here for debate? Counselor Carlson?
Thank you. Mr. Sanderson, I appreciate you and your team being here to answer the questions. We had quite a presentation at our SPC committee, and we had a lot of community members come forward, and they had various concerns. Many, I think as Acting Mayor Croson said, were around communication, language barriers, et, et cetera. Some were saying, I, I, I moved from a street that had great transit, and I believe Ms. Scout is here with us today, moved to an area on the north side that has no transit. And so when I read through these options, if we gave you the 1.5, I'll just round up, why not, the 1.5 million to do all of these, would that answer everyone's concern in the city? Or not even in the city, the concerns of the folks who showed up at committee?
Through, through your worship to Counselor Carlson, very difficult to say.
Well, there's nothing here about saying more service to the north side, which is where Ms., I believe Ms. Scout said, can't get the bus now.
Again, as far as those access issues, not, not necessarily on, on that one.
It would not answer the que, answer all the issues that were presented by the presenters in committee.
Not all of the presenters.
Thank you for that. Further to that, the, the options here, I love the options that are presented. As I said, I've been trying to get free transit for our vulnerable folks experiencing poverty, et cetera, in our community for over a decade now. And so when that was the first option presented for, albeit for seniors and youth, might not be my choice. But are you actively working on a plan to present this fall for transit, for a budget request this fall?
Through your worship to Counselor Carlson, I am not, but again, I would be more than happy to. We recently purchased the new fare collection system. We did have the discussion about the free transit option at that point in time. And again, I'm working off of council's direction based upon implementation of that new fare collection, which is coming to SPC in a, a week, I suppose, from now.
Well, thank you. So if this referral motion was passed, these would be forwarded, rather than being a one-time, one-off funding, that will start and end when the money runs out. A referral motion would put these into our operating budget deliberations and could be ongoing extended services, correct? If they're approved.
Through your worship to Counselor Carlson, that's my understanding I would defer to. I'm, I'm not the, I'm the transit expert though, not the processing.
Okay, thank you. Well, and final question if I can, Mayor Higgins. All of these options that are presented to us are based on an annual budget. You're four months into the year. When I see the implementation proposed, some of these aren't till August or November. So they could be prorated if, if council said, yeah, we want a month of this. They're, they're based on an annual budget is what I'm saying, and we are well into our, our year, correct?
Through your worship to Counselor Carlson, that is absolutely correct and an excellent point, that especially the service ones would be less than half the year. So would, this year be less than 350, but in subsequent years would be, would be the full amounts. They were annualized.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Higgins.
All right. Now, any further questions? There are still in for debate. I see Counselor Parker, Dodik, and, and Acting Mayor Croson. Is this for debate? A nod? This isn't questions? Okay, I take that as debate. So I will, I'm almost lost here. Who is, this is Jeff to actually open your, your referral.
I believe I opened before the questions.
All right. So debate. I'll hop to debate then. Counselor Dodik.
Thank you. This is the difficulty with ad hoc requests for money outside of the budget process. And you already heard that this will be an ongoing pressure. So if you approve this, forgetting for the moment as to what this might or might not be used for, we have to remember that we have a limited amount of money, and any money that we approve today for- And any money that we approve today for this purpose means that some other requests for the operating budget deliberations will not be considered because all of a sudden $350,000 is no longer available. So, you know, for example, I couldn't in two weeks come and say, well, you know, I'm still getting tired of getting my neck jarred around as I drive my car over the huge potholes in the city of Lethbridge. And say, well, all of a sudden I want $500,000 to fill in those potholes. Then I would hope that someone from council would say, Counselor Dodik, look, bring that up at the operating budget and where it can be debated and compared and to other projects and requests for money. Because again, we're not going to be able to approve 100%. So the referral motion in this particular case makes a lot of sense because you don't want one-time ad hoc requests for money. You want to deal with everything at the same time and treat everything and every request equitably and equally. And the transit manager, in response to one of Counselor Middleton Hope's question, where he had asked, what is the right amount? And he said, the right amount is a bit of a tough question. It is a bit of a tough question, but that's something we should be deciding, not here on a one-time ad hoc basis, but at operating budget where everything can be compared and we can debate and decide which projects or which initiatives should be funded. So I will be supporting Counselor Carlson's referral motion. Thank you.
Counselor Parker.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate, thank you very much to Transit for not only presenting today, but presenting at the numerous SPCs leading up to today's meeting. It's ironic or fitting that the two biggest issues that we've heard over the last year, if not the last two years, have been card collection in the back and transit. And we're asked to make a decision based on decisions of past council because there have been consequences to those decisions. And this is where bureaucracy and politics come together because the bureaucrats who do a great job implement the job that we give them with the amount of funds that they're allocated. And council took out $350,000 out of the transit last year and there was a consequence to that. And we heard it loud and clear, not only during election time, but leading up to election, of how frustrated people were in regards to how transit has been impacted. And I was actually right against the CityLink. I was going to vote right against it. I said, you know what, people are mad and angry. But I was told at the SPC that we can probably find a middle ground if we can get this $350,000 into transit to help fulfill these people who are falling through the cracks. Now, if you had unlimited amount of money, so be it. But that's not part of the discussion right now. And I really believe sometimes even if you gave transit free, I don't know if anyone's going to use transit because people still want to get to point A to point B quick. And we're really good at building roads in this community. So it's more of a matter of we want to improve the service levels in this community. I think people would rather, and this is my personal take, would rather have improved level of service versus getting a free pass. Because if you can't get somewhere conveniently or on a consistent manner, it means nothing. It really does mean nothing. So it is our job to be reactioned to what the community wants and desires. And I think a lot of the users who are not here today because they could be working or they may be students, would say loud and clear that they're falling through the cracks. And I think I've been told loud and clear that that $350,000 would go a long way. Now, if it goes a long way, we can then install it and we can measure it and do it. But if we just wait till this fall, technically, nothing gets implemented until early next year. So that's eight months where people are still going to be disenfranchised, feel like they're missing out, feel like their voices haven't been heard. So I think this is a perfect compromise. And that's why I wanted, I decided to be voted on. Because if this doesn't get supported, I'm not going to vote for CityLink. I'll go back to what it used to be. Because that's what I was, that's what I was expecting. That's what at the SPC, that's what we discussed was the compromise. So I would ask that we allocate the $350,000. I think it's compromise. I think we can find the funds. We find the funds in other ways when people are disenfranchised. And I think transit is an essential service. Not just something that's come and go. It's an essential service for a lot of people in this community. And we saw people who were crying with tears. They don't cry because they just want to cry. They cry because it's such an essential service and they want it, they want some help. And I think this $350,000 would go a long way. And like Mr. Sanderson said, if you could have all the money, of course you'd have all the money. But $350,000 would be a good start. So I think by deferring this to the budget deliberations is delaying. And we don't even know what's going to happen during budget. But I think if we allocate the $350,000, we can create some major changes and to add on to the CityLink, which if approved. So I'd ask for council's support and I'll be voting against the referral.
Acting Mayor Croson.
Thank you. Sorry, I had some computer issues and had to leave for a bit. I too will be voting against this referral. I appreciate where Counselor Carlson is coming from in this, but I agree with Counselor Parker. Listening at Civic Works is the reason I am voting against this referral. We know that the advantage of CityLinks is actually how it will have the continuous improvement. But the continuous improvement needs some funds behind it. And the 350 may not be the perfect number, but it does allow Transit to be able to do some adjustments and to do some work in advance of November. This is one of the reasons that I have actually wanted to move more to a budget that is every two years or every year even, rather than what we have now with every four years. Because we do have to be able to make changes as necessary when we listen to the public. And this, as I said, when we were at Civic Works, we clearly understand why we wanted to put this money back in. And I hope my colleagues too will understand why it's necessary to do sooner rather than later. So I will be voting against the referral.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Deputy Mayor Schmidt Rempel.
Thank you very much. And I certainly thank, thank all my council colleagues for their input on this. I do understand the essential need for this service, but I will be supporting this referral, this referral motion. I'd like to see these four options come forward to the operating budget with the potential of making them ongoing. I'd also like that to give the administration team an opportunity to put together the committee so that we can move forward. And as Mr. Sanderson has stated, there are still things to be accomplished with CityLink and making that redesign permanent. And some of those questions will be answered with this. So I will be supporting this referral motion.
Counselor Palladino.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reiko did an excellent job of had me convinced that we should refer this on Mr. Carlson's, Counselor Carlson's motion. But Mr. Parker, Ryan Parker here, did a very good job of explaining why we should carry on with the returning the $350,000 back into the transit budget to fill in the gaps as has been mentioned. Previous council made a decision, and it maybe wasn't the best decision, but it was the information they had at the time. We need to rely on these experts here that are on staff and they've done a resident engagement program. And so I think we have to go with their recommendation. I like, I like some of the options and I like all of the options actually. So I will be voting to not defer this.
All right, Counselor Middleton Hope.
I too will be voting against the referral motion largely because of a comment that Counselor Croson made in regards to the amount, the 350,000. It may not be the right amount, but it's going to go a distance to assisting Transit in providing a level of service that our citizens have asked for. And as a service provider, I think that's incumbent upon the city to do that. So I will be voting against the referral motion for that reason.
Any further debate? I would, you know, this is a very tough one because I've seen, you know, we get many emails, et cetera, going towards with comments about our CityLink. Now, do I think that there's funding that's needed for CityLink and for some of the changes there? Absolutely. It's something that is, it sounds like are going to be coming forward. And the right time for that is truly the budget as has been already previously debated by my colleagues. So it's not a no to the funding. It's a, let's look into this and make sure it's the right thing to do and the right time to do it. As has already been mentioned, budget comes at the time of year when items come to council during budget to make these decisions, to debate these decisions, to add, to amend, to really further dig deep into the requests that are coming forward. I just don't see, we have, I don't see a funding source for this. It's just $350,000. I would take it as probably MRSR, one-time funding, whatever that may be. But I just, I just don't see that. And so not a no to the funding, but let's put this into our budget deliberations later in the fall. And so for that reason, I will be supporting the referral motion. And Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, your worship. And boy, I've been going both sides on this, knowing the people that came to our last meeting and their need. But I feel there is a lot more questions than answers here. And to put in the $350,000 is sort of like, we don't, we don't really know where it's specifically going to go. And I think we need to, we need to look at it. We have to figure it out and we have to consider what is the best option. And I, I think we can get there. And so I will be supporting the referral motion.
And to close, Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mary Hagan. Appreciate the discussion, appreciate the questions. I really appreciate our administration being here to answer the questions, especially the options presented. Because I think I hear around the table that a lot of these options we like. But approving this money, what option are you getting? We have no clue. We're just saying, here's $350,000. I know that's for a year, but it's only four months in. Here's the money. You don't know what you're going to do with it. We're not telling you what to do with it. Just have some money. And then we hear that also it's not going to actually address all the issues we heard at committee. So I think what the proper route is, is to give our administration direction to go away, get some plans, get some options, some ideas presented at budget. And we might say, I like option one, two, three, and four. Go and be, but now we're holding you to account. We're saying, those are the options we want you to do. This is the money for it and it's ongoing money. It's not one-time funding that you're, in three of these options, you have to hire full-time staff. Well, what if the money doesn't come through in the operating budget? Where do those staff go? I think it's incumbent on council to do things in a thoughtful and deliberate way, not just flavor of the month. And we are about to come into our operating budget where I will be a huge champion for transit like I always have been. I'm so glad to hear that I may have one vote that's always voted against my transit plans coming on side. So I'm looking forward to the budget deliberations. And I'd ask for the vote.
With that closed, it sounds like the question has been called. All in favor of the referral motion? Opposed?
Mary Hagan, I'll do a roll call.
Be a roll call, please. Thank you.
Counselor Carlson.
In favor.
Counselor Dodik.
In favor.
Counselor Middleton Hope.
Opposed.
Counselor Palladino.
Opposed.
Counselor Parker.
Opposed.
Acting Mayor Croson.
Definitively opposed.
Deputy Mayor Rempel or Schmidt Rempel.
In favor.
Mayor Hagan.
In favor.
Counselor Campbell.
In favor.
That carries five to four. Thank you.
All right, so with that, we'll move back to number two, which is be resolved, City Council, direct that the CityLink network redesign becomes a permanent with quarterly adjustments being made to reflect feedback, changing travel patterns and metric indicators. Acting Mayor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Hagan. I'm going to start this with something you may not think. In 2015, an American study showed that the typical American household subsidizes car ownership in America by $1,100 per year over and above the cost of gas tax, gas taxes, tolls and other user fees. Car owners don't even come close to covering the cost of maintaining the roads that they use, which are built with taxpayers' money. Taxpayers subsidize roads for cars on an ongoing basis. And yet, whenever we look at a discussion around transit, we always talk about how we subsidize transit and invest in roads. When in reality, what we do is we invest in transit and subsidize roads. And we have built a lot of roads in Lethbridge. But what we have also done over the past few decades is allowed an ongoing decline in our transit system. We need to rethink entirely how we do transit and CityLink is that answer. The Civic Works SPC, which came forward with the resolution, which has been partially declining today, was one of the best SPCs I've ever sat through. Because the advantage of SPCs is when those three groups, administration, city council and the public come together and work together to find the best possible solutions for our community. And coming out of that SBC, it was understood that CityLink is that answer. There is a great 2019 article about we miss streetcars. And we miss streetcars not because of the streetcars, but because of what they represent for transit. They represent a reliable service and a service that is something that you know is going to come on time, is going to be there. The key to successful transportation infrastructure is whether you can get where you need to go conveniently. CityLink is showing that. CityLink will do this. Now, it may seem counterintuitive at this point because we have had quite a few complaints. But what we know is over the past few decades, many people have actually left our transit system. And those who are still remaining are the ones who are experiencing change and those are the ones who are complaining. But we haven't heard from those who are using the system and are getting back on it. And we are seeing that through the statistics. We are seeing an amazing system. And I know it was several months ago, I actually said to Mr. Sanderson, this system, CityLink, makes so much sense to me. Because as a historian, when I see it, I am seeing the old streetcar system, a system that is set up to be exactly what good transit systems are supposed to be. Fast, frequent, interesting, efficient, open and accessible. And yes, we need to work towards it. One of the things a good transit system has is improved frequency. It has the comfort and safety of passengers in mind. And this is moving towards it. When I looked at this system, one of the reasons I like CityLink, yes, we have an expert in Mr. Sanderson. But I sent this to several people I know in other communities who work around transit systems. And they said time and again to me, you're on the right path. CityLink is the answer and it's going to be what you want in the future. And as I mentioned earlier, this has the ability to have continuous improvement, which is actually an advantage over the old streetcar system because we can move buses around and keep what's actually best in the system. CityLink, if we move permanent, we know that we can move ahead with the communication plan. We know we can move ahead with ensuring that the structures are there. Yes, change management is difficult. It is horrible. It is time-consuming and it is hard. And I appreciate how much change this has been for the community. But in the long run, this is going to make us the transit system that Lethbridge requires. And I hope my colleagues will support this.
Any debate? I do have a question if I could, or questions, I'm sorry. Start with questions for Mr. Sanderson. I think this is an easy question, but when we throw COVID into it, nothing seems to be easy, a pre or post-COVID, and I don't want to say post-COVID, as it's still, you know, here. Is transit ridership up with the introduction of CityLink? Again, I know, understanding COVID pre and hopefully on the other side. So not a really easy answer, but to me, is ridership up with any of the data that you're bringing in with the introduction of CityLink?
Thank you, your worship. And that is, I always hate to give the it depends answer to a very straightforward question. If our ridership today is compared to our ridership in 2019, we aren't, we aren't at those levels yet. How much is attributable to COVID? We don't necessarily know that number. Because aside from COVID, we've also had the strike at the university, which has impacted again 60% of our ridership coming from that point in time. What we have done is we have done, run projections that would compare the performance of our pre-existing transit network with the CityLink transit network through, again, I don't necessarily want to get so far into the weeds on it. But we feel very comfortable in saying that the CityLink network is outperforming the old network by somewhere between 10 and 20%.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. And I know it's a very, very tough. We throw COVID into this and you never know. And also the strike at the university. So it's, it's tough to make those decisions. But I just, looking at the bigger picture, what this, you know, looks like or future is projection. So I appreciate that answer. Counselor Parker. It says questions. For the questions, so I can move it to open debate. Counselor Croson.
I rather think I already did.
You did indeed. Thank you. You did indeed. Thank you. And Counsel Parker to continue the debate.
Yeah, thank you very much. And once again, I want to thank our administration, who've done an amazing job in presenting it. I won't be supporting it. And for the reason being, it's actually an easy decision, because so many people have called me and are so disappointed with the changes. And I was really hoping that $350,000 was going to go to help those folks and kind of finding a compromise. But I think that a lot of people are being dis- dis-served by not having, having the changes. I think a lot of people's voices have been heard and not listened to. And I think that money would have went a long way. I know you're doing the very best with you can, and you're thinking forward. And I think we have to think forward. But I think a lot of people really want the old system. And I'm representing what they've told me over the last year, and especially the last six months, through the SPCs, through the emails, through the phone calls, through the coffee talks, all that kind of stuff. They want not, maybe you can't go back to what it used to be, but they don't like the new system. And for that reason, I will not be supporting it.
Counsel Carlson.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Hagan. I will be supporting this, this resolution, because I think it is a good system. And I think we need to make a decision rather than waffling and going back and forth. Many of the issues I've heard, and we heard at committee, was the fact that it is still up in the air. It's still a pilot project. It's still, we're not sure what we're doing. I think the changes we've implemented are beneficial to the majority of our system. I loved our acting Mayor Croson's debate about the old streetcar system. As that's what I'm used to in other communities. I've lived in many communities across Canada, and I've always been a transit rider. I'm a transit rider here. I'm a transit rider in every community I go to. And I've been waiting for something like CityLink to come to Lethbridge for a long time. So I'm not toddling through neighborhood after neighborhood on a bus with one other person, sometimes no other people on it. So I do appreciate this system. But I think making a statement that this is the system we're going with, and now get those changes, put in those capital investments so that the community knows how it works, the community is, is advised this is the way it's going, and give our staff time to communicate better. So if we keep hemming and hawing, we are always going to have our community up in the air not knowing which way we're going. We've got to say, this is, this is the system. It'll get better. I think Mr. Sanderson and his team are always saying, yeah, if you give us more money, we can make it better. And that's what I'm looking forward to in the fall, is how we can do that. But we've got to make the decision so our community is not struggling for another year or more on what the transit system is going to be. So I, I have full support.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt-Remple.
I too will be supporting this. We talk in the resolution that we're going to see quarterly adjustments to reflect feedback. So we are committed to, to gathering that information from the community and making those adjustments, reflecting the feedback of our community. CityLink allows for the expansion, growth, and continuous improvement we need in our community, and particularly as we grow into the future. And it's incumbent for us to be thinking about the future of the city and what our public transit is going to need and what it's going to become. We're seeing good metrics on a regular basis. That increased ridership, our data is showing that. So for those reasons, yes, I will be supporting this.
I, I, I too will be supporting this. And, and the main reason, it was just, my colleague just mentioned, it's quarterly adjustments. This isn't set in stone. As things come up, changes are required. This is, this gives the opportunity for our transit to really, you know, we fluid with some of these, you know, decisions that are going forward that is going to help the community. And for, for that reason, with these quarterly adjustments, I, I, I think that's of, of extreme importance. And so for that reason, I will be supporting this. Counsel Middleton-Hope.
What if I could just see the whole motion? There's some gaps there. So if we could just see the whole motion that we're going to be voting on?
This is just on number two. Just on number two. So it's just on that. Counsel Campbell.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I, you know, having seen Mr. Sanderson and his team being very willing to implement a system and, and to keep going back. And I, I know you're listening. You listen to all of the, all of the issues. And I know for a lot of people, it's difficult. The change is difficult, and, and it's frustrating. But I, I just, like everyone has been saying about the quarterly reports, when, when it's not working, how can we fix this? And I, I really believe in, in Mr. Sanderson and his team that they're going to come forward with the, the resolutions, and we're going to get there. And just, and this is probably a horrible analogy, but I'm thinking, you know, we hate change. And I'm thinking, when, when computers came in, in the radio business, I'm saying, this is stupid. Why are we doing computers? We've got turntables. Anyway, that, like I said, probably a horrible analogy. But we, you know, the, the change, the changes are necessary, and they, and they will benefit us. So I will be supporting, supporting the resolution.
And it looks like nobody else is on the turntable. So with that, set it back to Deputy Mayor, or sorry, Acting Mayor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Hagan. In the 1960s, the city went from monthly utility bills to bimonthly utility bills. And if you had actually looked at the letters to the editor, and if you had read the reports from city council in the 1960s, you would have thought this was the worst decision council had ever made. So council at that time sent it to plebiscite at the election. And it actually won by vast majority. The vast majority said, yes, bimonthly bills are much better. So when you actually look at what the public was saying, it did not actually reflect the majority. And I think that is one of the hardest things that we do as council, is we, we need to, we must, we should, listen to concerns and complaints. But it's really hard sometimes that we don't hear from people who are happy with things. We don't hear from people who are, for whom the system is improving. And that is the difficulty with the changes we made to the transit system. We knew that the people who were going to be most affected were those few people who kept hanging on to the transit system, or were still using it even as people stopped using it and stepped away from it. And we knew, we were told right from the beginning that they would be affected, and they were. But we also know from the statistics that people are going on to the system and using it, improving the system, but we're not hearing from them. And I think if we were, we would see that there are a lot of people that this system is working on behalf of. One of the things, and I'll just give you this last part. Five years ago, I was talking to somebody who was greatly concerned about people who work in our industrial parks. There was very limited transit system there, especially not late at night. So they were walking in all weather home from the industrial park. We now, through CityLink, have bus service in the industrial park. And I feel a lot better that there are now people who are using transit to get home rather than walking in dangerous conditions. So I know, based on those things, that there are people being helped through this system. And I know, as we keep the changes system, it will only improve. And I'm hoping my colleagues will see that as well. And so I will call the question.
Question's been called, and we'll do that via roll call. Madam Clark?
Mayor Hagan. Counsel Dodick.
Opposed.
Counsel Middleton-Hope.
In favor.
Counsel Palladino.
Favor.
Counsel Parker. Acting Mayor Croson.
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt-Remple.
In favor.
Mayor Hagan.
Favor.
Counsel Campbell.
In favor.
Counsel Carlson.
In favor.
That's carried seven to two.
Thank you. And with that, I'll ask my colleagues, we do a bio break here and return at three, 3:25? Is that fine? That means probably 3:30. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move along here. And we're on 8.1.2 Waste and Recycling Collection Relocation Update from Acting Mayor Croson. Be resolved, the City Council direct administration to investigate the costs, timelines, implementation plan, and implications of each of the following options report back to council through the Economic Standing Policy Committee no later than October 11th, 2022. Number one, maintaining waste and recycling collection in lane for all households in areas identified in the cart relocation efficiency project using a local improvement model or other utility rate funding model. Number two, return to back lane collection for those households that were relocated as a result of the cart relocation efficiency project. And number three, continue with the cart relocation efficiency project in 2024 following the public engagement process described during the Economic Standing Policy Committee on April 13th, 2022. So, open that up. First of all, for questions? On that, Councilor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Hagan. On point number two, just a question on that, to return to back lane collection, is that feasible? And what is the cost associated with that?
Question two...
Or is that just to do, to get that information is that we're asking? Because we have no clue about that right now. Is that what...
There would be some costs that we would assume right off the hop would be lost, so some efficiencies. So, $65,000 approximately in direct operating costs would be lost if we were to revert all 4,163 homes back to lane collection. There would also be those indirect cost savings that we talked about, so snow and ice control costs, as well as premature lane degradation. But, yeah, there needs to be some more work on other pieces to find that out.
Okay, so, thank you. So, we do know that if that was the option, council decided to do, there would definitely be cost increases. This referral will get the more in-depth numbers for us.
That is correct.
Thank you.
And if I can turn that over to Mr. Sanchez?
Yes, just was to clarify, the idea of this motion is for us to go back and look at each one of them. We're gonna come back before October 11th with the detailed analysis and cost implications. We are also going to look not only at the cost, but also all the other factors that are gonna play into these, each one of these options, and then come back to council and list all of those.
The question I have is, in watching the SPC on this, does it also mean, and I'm seeing in here the return to back lanes collection for those households, the engagement will be on ones that were already moved? Because I thought that I'd heard from this point going forward, but this is for all of it. Is that correct?
So, the intent in this one is, if we decide to continue with the project, before we do any other move, we're gonna engage with every single one of those residents that are going to be moved. And there is also an opportunity for us, for those residents that today are not satisfied, and they have been moved in the past, they could call 311 and we will be able to work with them in order to see if we can find a solution in the meantime from now until October, when we're going to come back with all these options. So, again, it's an opportunity for those that are not willing to take the change or are not happy with the change, to contact us so we can go back and revisit the situation for them.
The one-off now, then, for the ones that were already done, am I understanding that correctly? You are not going to reengage them unless they reach out on a one, on one basis, then, through 311?
That's correct. If they are not happy, or they want to talk to us about their situation, they can call 311, and we will send somebody from the operations group to talk to them.
But there's still that opportunity that could, with this resolution, return their carts, from what I'm seeing, to back lane at a later date, once this review is done?
That's correct. Option number two, when we're coming back in October, that's an option to revert all the changes. And there will be a cost implication, equipment, all the analysis, so council can make an informed decision at that time.
Thank you. Councilor Middleton-Ho.
Thank you. Always a fulsome discussion, I appreciate it. I'd ask you to refer to point one of the motion. It talks in regards to, we're going to be, we are contemplating providing a service that we used to provide by going to back lane services, but now we're asking about an additional cost to those residents for service that they used to get. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, it would be a reassessment of those particular lanes. Joel mentioned this in the SPC. So, the costs of service at the time that those lanes were moved, and the costs associated to put them back the way they were now, would be different. So, we'd wanna do an assessment there and determine what those costs of service would be, so that we can provide an adequate difference there.
So, to be fair, if there is a reduction in those costs for those individual residents, that would be passed along to them as well?
If there was a finding that we could actually reduce the cost of service, then, yeah, we could consider that for these areas in particular.
Thank you.
Acting Mayor Croson?
Thank you, Mayor Hagan. When you say you are going to do a review of full costs, does that include costs such as workers' compensation, money that we're saving by having staff do something where the truck is doing the work and not staff? Will such factors as that be included in the cost analysis?
So, if we were asked, speaking to point two, if we were asked to provide a full cost to return to lane collection for these 4,163 homes, yes, that would need to be part of that conversation. So, health and safety costs, whether that be minor injuries, major injuries. Thankfully, in this municipality, we haven't had to see any sort of fatalities, but we'd have to consider all options. The other thing I'd like to mention in terms of full cost, we do wanna consider the engagement piece. So, engaging with residents who have made modifications, who have, you know, adjusted to the move, are satisfied with the move in some cases, certainly not saying that everyone is, but some people may be. So, that engagement piece would be part of that full cost as well.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hagan.
Councilor Dotick?
Excuse me if I feel like history's repeating itself, but I think on April 13th, a lot of these discussions were had in terms of the cost, and the health and safety, and the efficiencies, and you were questioning them, and then you came up with the $65,000. But right now, I just wanna again confirm that in the, the initial plan was to move 7,862 from back lane to front lane. In fact, at this date, 4,163 have been moved, leaving 3,699, which will still be considered, but that has been on hold till 2024. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so, I'm trying to figure out at least the first operative clause. Haven't these questions been answered, in fact? And that what we're doing now is basically revisiting a revisited issue?
So, I would say for the, there's some additional costs that I think weren't fully considered, that we would wanna make sure that we're assessing when looking to return back to lane collection. So, again, taking a more wholesome look at full costs, like health and safety, as well as the costs for people who have already made adjustments.
See, this is what the concern I'm having, is it's, to me, it almost seems like this was an administrative decision that was made, and you said it's health and safety-based and cost-based and efficiency-based, and you were questioned quite vigorously on that on April 13th, and at least in my view, it wasn't a compelling argument. But it seems to me that there's almost a sense that the people that have effectively been moved without their consent from back lane to front lane, or going to, by attrition, by lapse of time itself, they're just effectively gonna say you can't win. So, how do you address folks who've said, okay, I'm now, I can't fight City Hall? Do you really believe that this resolution will address those concerns?
I do, yeah. I think there, the engagement process that we talked about, where by going and re, you know, when residents wanna come and have that conversation with us, re-engaging with residents, explaining our process, finding mitigative measures that we can take, so we have things like our assisted collection, we have...
Okay, let me stop you there. You said mitigation, but if they say to you, look, I don't want front lane pickup, the mitigation processes, one of the options isn't, well, we'll pick it up in the back lane. Mitigation process is anything but that we're gonna change our minds, isn't it?
Well, if I can, if I can speak to that, the idea with these three options that we have here is that we are going to come back to council with all the costs for either doing this through a local improvement method, or either just removing or moving back everybody back to the lanes, or just continue moving forward with what we were doing before. There will be options, and those options are going to probably not satisfy some residents, and we will make sure we work with them. At the end of the day, one of the options that we have here, and is why we have this motion today, number two is, we didn't have the cost of what happened if we removed everybody else back to the lanes. We are going to calculate that number and then come back in October, and that will give council and even the residents a better idea, because one of the possible implications is that we, we will have, there is an opportunity that the utility rate will increase for all the residents if we move this back, because we won't be able to absorb the cost that we have been absorbing for the last few years. We might need more equipment, more staff in order to deliver the service. So, again, council has to be aware that now by reverting, the utility rates will increase for everybody, including those that don't have a lane today, and they have a fixed cost based on the last few years. They might need to pay a little bit more in order to cover for the cost for the whole city as a whole.
Okay, I understand that, but we went through that on April 13th. At that time, for the moving of 4,163 homes, the direct cost or savings were $65,000. There was some dispute as to whether the efficiencies were somewhere between 5% and 10%, okay? It could be anywhere in there. But the question I have for you today is, if you were able to canvas the 4,163 people that had their change from back to front lane, if they were here today, 4,163 of them, do you have any sense, having talked to a number of people, what percentage of those 4,163 who had their lane changed from back to front would like it returned?
So, that's an excellent question, and I can tell you that as part, one of the reasons we're coming back in October is because we're planning to send a mail out later to all 4,300, or how many we have moved, and there will be a link there with a survey question. We're gonna try to engage and get that feedback. I can tell you that we are not probably gonna get an answer from all of them, not everybody will take the time to answer a survey, or to get back to the city. There will be several options. Not everybody has an iPhone or a computer, so they can call 311, they can express the answer to that engagement that we're trying to do. And we are gonna try to come back in October with a sense of, out of all the mailouts that we did, this is what we hear, and this is what we listen, or the residents told us.
Well, see, again, that raises the same problem that I had back on April 13th, when you showed a graph that saying a certain number of people, or 5%, were against it, phoning 311, and then you said that 95% didn't have a problem with it, whereas in reality, it just means that 95% people didn't respond. So, I know you can't answer the question, but if you're using the same methods to gauge whether people are happy or unhappy, and if they have access to internet, or if at this point in time, they just feel, you know, it's it, the decision has been made, what's the point? That, I'm just trying to get a sense, if you have any idea today what percentage that would be, and I know you can't give me that answer, but, so I pose that almost as a rhetorical question. Thank you.
Thank you. Acting Mayor Croson?
Thank you, Mayor Hagan. Let me ask then a rhetorical question. 4,000 people's carts have been moved, which means about 16,000 people, there's another 16,000 households. Have you talked to those 16,000 households if they're okay with subsidizing the 4,000 households?
No, we have not.
But if we do go ahead with this motion, will that be some of the public engagement that you will bring back to us, is to talk to the community as a whole about what the options are and bring all those recommendations to council?
So, I think regardless of which option is decided upon, whether it's option two, option three, option one, not to go out of order there, we would, we would be doing better engagement than we did in the past, regardless of what option we picked. But yes, certainly engage with those 16,000 additional households.
Because certainly they need to have a voice in this as well. Thank you.
Any further questions? I've got a question, but I don't know if it's more of a debate or question, so I will, actually, I will hold off, and I'll turn the time over to Deputy Mayor, or Acting Mayor Croson to open debate.
Thank you, Mayor Hagan. I have actually been a garbage collector decades, decades ago. I had a summer job with the town of Oxl, when I was back in university, and part of my job was working for the operations department at the town, and I did garbage collection. On a fun note, I've never had more drinks offered to me at any job in my life, but that's an aside. But I remember the backbreaking work of picking up garbage cans and putting them into the trucks. And that was the way for decades and decades that garbage collection has been done. Now, of course, garbage collection is changing. We have a different way, a different mechanism. We have the black bins and the blue bins, and are introducing the green bins. We have different trucks of picking them up. When we first saw the change from back lane to front lane, counterintuitively, we as council at that time said, this can't work. How can this be more efficient? So, what we asked was the city manager at that time, Bram Ostrain, to do a ride-along, to look at back lane, front lane, et cetera, and to report back to us if this operationally was actually a better decision. And he was emphatic that from the way he saw it, the front lane, picking things up on the street was much more efficient. Now, of course, time has passed, we have a new council, and things have changed. So, last week, I decided to do same. I talked to Mr. Sanchez and Mr. Nichols, and I did a ride-along in one of our garbage trucks. And I actually went through London Road, through some of the most difficult and narrow back alleys, and I saw side pickup, and I saw rear pickup, and I was actually able to see how it works, and then later I sat and watched some of the front street pickup. And though it is counterintuitive, the efficiencies are there. When you watch somebody have to do the rear pickup, you can see the amount of time, how much longer it takes. And I would encourage all of my colleagues, and even members of the public, to phone our department and see if they can do a ride-along, because you'll get a completely different system. So, I have no doubt that the system that we are seeing introduced is more efficient, and it is being based on metrics. Council, though, of course, has the right to be as inefficient as we want. If we wanna put the money into it, we can. And this is what is actually being done in this. They are saying, okay, we created this very efficient system, which the community isn't liking, council isn't necessarily liking. Let us look thoroughly into it. Let us look at all the costs and bring you back all the information so that you can make the decision. And if you want to go backwards and change the system, so we have rear lane pickup in those places, they're also gonna give us options on how to pay for it, if that is a choice. Do we want to look at local improvement? Do we want to look at those groups paying for it? Or do we wanna have the entire community subsidize other people, or some mixture of it, et cetera? And that is what this is. And this hopefully will finally bring this discussion to an end, because we'll have all the information, and then council can choose. I am hoping my colleagues will support this, because we have been debating this for years. We all have different ideas. This hopefully will give us that final information and move us ahead one way or the other.
Councilor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Hagan. Acting Mayor Croson took most of the debate out of my mouth. I'll just add my support to this resolution. I think more information is always, always better if council can make a good decision. I really do appreciate two things, though, that I would like to highlight and hopefully get support for, is the possibility, an investigation of using a local improvement. Because I've talked to some people that said, yep, I'd actually be willing to pay a buck or two more to keep it in the back. It's a use-or-pay system that I think our citizen, our residents, may understand and may really wholeheartedly jump onto. The other thing I really wanna appreciate is, is that we are gonna do better engagement. The mailouts, I mean, you can lead a horse to water, can't make him drink, but at least we're trying. We, folks can't say, you never asked me. Actually, if we're doing a direct mailout to you and you ignore it, well, we did ask you, we tried to drag the information out of you, actually. So, I'm hopeful we get good data from that, because I do know, contrary to what we hear, we do hear the complaints. We don't hear the folks who actually may have hated it at first, but now have adapted and quite like it, that it's quite efficient, it's quite convenient for them. So, I appreciate that we're gonna take that... So I appreciate that we're going to take that time, because I would hate to make the same mistake that I heard one of my colleagues talk about, removal without their consent. I'd hate to do it in reverse, just council being wishy-washy, flip-flopping back and forth so people have to change with the breeze rather than based on good information. This resolution will provide us good information, and I'm really hopeful that we will see that. Thank you.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Sanchez and your team, for presenting to the SBC. And we had a very thorough conversation. I think that was the whole idea of becoming SBCs, is to kind of dig a little deeper, hear from community. And I thought it was a really good conversation. I really, what I really liked about that meeting, and not everyone was privy, or not everyone, well, everyone was privy, but not everyone can make it, but you said, Mr. Sanchez, at that time, the main reason why we're doing this is we want to make sure we could hold utility rates at a line that was almost, you haven't done a utility rate in regards to waste since 2010, I do believe you're saying. And by doing this, you're holding the rates. And I think at that time, I said, you know what? I think people really, really value having their garbage or their waste removed in their back alley. And I think if I went around and I asked people, they wouldn't mind paying that extra dollar 50 to have that convenience. Like, people really value their services. And so I think we put too much weight sometimes, thinking by saving someone a dollar 50, the inconvenience isn't that bad. But I think we heard loud and clearly, you know, when you hear Mrs. Smith, a 75-year-old lady, having to take her cart down these steps, down a hill, over this and that, and then put it between two cars, just didn't make sense. And when people ask us that, you go, why'd you guys do that? Well, I would say it really wasn't a council decision, administration's trying new ways and all that. I'm glad by seeing this resolution that you're going to come back with the consequences of that decision, and there's a cost to it. So when we do, hopefully, and I like number two, just so you know my personal take, because I have to keep an open mind as an elected official, but number two is my favorite option. But I think by doing our due diligence and coming back, I think we can look at all our options and look at the consequences, both financially, but also service levels. So I will be supporting this resolution.
Counselor Dodek?
You know, I find it absolutely odd that we talk about charging people more, to return them to the service that they had, and that they never wanted changed in the first place. We have absolutely no data as to which parts of the city, for example, front lane pickup may actually cost more because of the configuration of the roads, the fact that there's no front driveways, and they'd have to pick them up in between cars and that. We're just assuming that the efficiencies are there, only because you're comparing back lane versus front lane in one area. So basically, we had 4,163 people that, because of administrative decision, had a change made. And I'll reiterate what I believe happened on April 13 at the SBC meeting, was that I didn't find any of the arguments compelling with respect to the health and safety issues, the cost, or the efficiencies. So I think we're plowing old ground if this resolution is passed, and I would ask that council not support it.
Debate, Jen, or Deputy Mayor Schmidt-Rempel?
Thank you for this. You know, thank you, Mr. Sanchez, for coming back, for bringing forward the information you have brought forward. And I will support this motion. We know that there were gaps in the initial communications and decisions. So I think retracing our steps in this instance is okay, to take a look, collect that information, find out how everybody's feeling about this. Certainly, the mailout is a great way to do that communicating. And then we can properly evaluate what that looks like before we move forward one way or the other. So yes, I will be supporting this.
Counselor Parker, you had a question?
I do have a question. It refers to the comment from Counselor Dodek. If this was defeated, what would happen?
If this resolution is defeated, we're going to continue with the changes, as we said, and it's going to be until 2024, as we mentioned before. We're not doing anything else, but we will maintain the same direction that we have before, unless council tells us to go one way or the other.
My follow-up to that, to the city clerk, if I may. If this was defeated, could a member of council bring a subsequent resolution at this meeting? Or would it have to be advertised or something like that?
Subsequent resolution to do what?
Like, could we do, maybe, here, why don't we do this? Could we amend this resolution?
I'll make it simple. If this, if this resolution is defeated, I will bring a resolution to return from back lane to, sorry, from front lane to back lane pickup for the 4,163 residents that have been impacted.
Thank you. Knowing that, that does change my mind.
Alternate resolution.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you, Counselor Dodek. Thank you.
Counselor Middleton Hope?
Just to follow up on Counselor Dodek's comment, so return the 4,163-ish to the back lane without cost?
Then for now, I mean, yes. To be, to put them in the exact same place that they were prior to the change being made. So the cost to them would be like everyone else. Whatever cost they were paying, whatever they're paying now, actually, is what they would be paying subsequently. Now...
I think we're discussing hypotheticals. I think we should finish the debate on this.
Yeah, I was just thinking, we should deal with the resolution, when the motion comes forward, for clarification, understanding. But as far as moving forward, I'd like to just throw my two cents in here for debate. I mean, in here, what I'd already heard is, is turn to previous and just make it work. Frustrating part that I had with this, I'll be very honest, is the severe lack of engagement through this process earlier, and then hearing that, you know, we didn't do the engagement, but if they want it back, we're going to charge them. And I'm, but we'll engage going further. I know we can't fix what's already happened, totally understand that. But it's my hope, and in hearing some of the things that are going to be looked into when it comes to this, this resolution in the fall here, is safety. Well, I hope it's the same thing, safety back to front. Drove around these different areas, and I've seen how tight it is in the front with cars, kids dodging out between cars. In the back, don't see that as much. I hope that the whole safety thing is looked at, and not just for, it's unsafe in the back, and it's safer in the front, but we actually really do a wholesome look into that. I think we're going to reiterate what is, what is already there. So I'm happy to see that there will be a resolution coming forward to just return this, if this is defeated. For that reason, I will not support this. And I'll go back to Deputy Mayor, is it Deputy Mayor Croson, or sorry, Acting Mayor Croson, to close debate.
Thank you. I'll start my debate by, one, the city has grown since we've made the change. So for you to think that there is not going to be any increase in charges to move these from the front to the back is quite hilarious, actually. So what we will be doing is actually 16,000 households to subsidize 4,000 households. So if you think you've been getting phone calls so far, wait till the rest of the communities figure out, if this is defeated, that they will be having increased charges as a result of this, without going deeper into this and actually doing a thorough study, which this will actually do. The other thing, and I want to bring a holistic point of view here. When we have looked at transit today, when we looked at this today, when we looked at the outline plan earlier today, one of the things we have to realize is we created a lot of these, and by we, I mean this council, previous councils, et cetera, through the planning and development we've done in the community. Through letting our city grow out constantly by not having grid patterns where grid patterns work, by, you know, not paying attention to that, we've actually created and exacerbated a lot of these. Because as the city has grown, we needed to extend our utilities, the cost is there. We asked our staff to make sure they're as efficient as possible, and they've done that. And now we're questioning that. So, one, remember that a lot of these problems have come through our not paying attention to some of the things we've done. And this is actually creating that. It's doing a study and a proper look at this, bringing that information back, and then we can make the decisions that we want. So I hope my colleagues will support this, because this is doing it in the proper manner. And with that, I will call the vote.
How about I do a roll call? All right, Counselor Middleton Hope?
Opposed.
Counselor Palladino?
I will support the resolution the way it is.
Counselor Parker?
I know now, opposed.
Acting Mayor Croson?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt-Rempel?
In favor.
Mayor Higgins?
My mic is not working, so I'll sit over here. I am opposed.
Counselor Campbell?
In favor.
Counselor Carlson?
In favor.
Counselor Dodek?
Opposed.
That carries five to four. We're going to have a recess till 4 o'clock for the public hearing, and hopefully we can fix... Enjoy.
Welcome back. We are on Section 13, public hearing. And we'll start off with Bylaw 6352, public hearing. I call to order the public hearing for Bylaw 6352, land use bylaw amendment re 3222, Giffen Road North, 3266, Giffen Road North, 3373, 32nd Street North, and 3417, 32nd Street North. Procedure will be, we'll begin by calling on Tyson Boylan, senior community planner, to provide background to the case. Anyone who wishes to speak on this bylaw will then be called upon. We'll ask three times if there's anyone else who wishes to make a presentation. City council will then have the opportunity to ask questions of any of the presenters. The hearing will then be closed. Consideration of third and second reading may be made by city council immediately following the public hearing. I now call on Tyson Boylan, I'm sorry, Tyson, to provide the background to the case. Tyson?
Your worship and members of council, this is Bylaw 6352. It's a proposed land use bylaw amendment to a number of parcels on the corner of Giffen Road and 32nd Street in Shering. Next slide, please. So the slide above describes the applicant and the purpose for today's direct control rezoning. Next slide. The subject site is outlined in green above. As shown, it is located in the central part of the Shering business and industrial park. As you can see, the site is surrounded by light and medium industrial uses, and is across from the Luthbridge Sports Park. Next slide, please. The photos above show the site, which is vacant, and you can see the Triple M Homes plant in the background to the north. Next slide. Shown above is the land use concept map from the ASP, which suggests business industrial in this location. Next slide. And here's the map from the Shering outline plan, which again shows business industrial in compliance with the ASP here. Next slide. This slide shows the existing and proposed land use districts. The applicant wishes to develop a mini storage facility and RV storage on the site, which is considered to be in the freight and storage use under the land use bylaw. The use is neither permitted nor discretionary in the IB district, so a rezoning to a DC district is required. The proposed DC district retains all of the existing uses of the IB district, and also adds the use of freight and storage. Next slide, please. So the application was evaluated in terms of different planning documents, including the South Saskatchewan Regional Plan and the MDP, and it fulfills these. Next slide. In terms of the governing ASP and outline plan, the proposed amendment is in compliance with the land uses that are described and shown in these plans. City staff had concerns with traffic access onto Giffen Road and screening from the adjacent sports park, which has been addressed through the regulations of this DC bylaw. Next slide, please. So mail letters were sent out to the 16 owners of the parcel shown on the green hatches above, as appeared on the Herald, and this was also advertised on the city's website. I did receive one email from an adjacent landowner who echoed the concerns that our transportation department had. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, bylaw 6352 is compliant with all existing statutory and approved plans for the area, and our recommendation is on the slide above. Thank you.
Boylan, I do see that we do have the applicant, we have a video from the applicant Ken Fletcher and Patrick Rosetti, and they'll be doing that through video of the presentation. Is that correct? Mr. Resterson? Okay. And I'm sorry, are you in the, oh, I'm sorry, if you want to come up and speak, I didn't realize. Sorry, I thought this was just the... Is the video fine then? Okay, sorry, I thought that the video was just sent in. I didn't realize you were in the gallery. Thank you. There's still a couple minutes. Is there anything else you wanted to add, Mr. Fletcher or Mr. Rosetti, to that? Or is that fine? That's fine? All right, thank you. Are there any members of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? As a reminder, presenters have five minutes to speak at the issue. For a second time, is there any members of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? For a third and final time, are there any members of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? Hearing no other presenters, it's now time for City Council to ask questions of the presenters. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Through you to Mr. Boylan if I can. Just to provide clarity, this is completely a land use amendment. If this gets approved by council, there'll still be a development approval coming forward that will cover all the transportation issues, landscaping, etc., etc. But right now, this is just, is this an appropriate land use? And any of the concerns that transportation or folks had can be addressed at the development.
Yes, so actually, the direct control bylaw contains two different, there is two different regulations. One was to prevent, prevent direct vehicular access onto Giffen Road. That's addressed, that's addressed in the direct control bylaw. Same with screening as well, too. So at the, at the development permit stage, the applicant will have to abide by those.
Excellent. Thank you.
Counselor Dodik.
Yes, my question is to Mr. Sanchez. Is this a front lane or back lane waste pickup? No, just kidding.
All right, Counselor Middleton-Hope.
Thank you. Counselor Carlson asked one of my questions, so I appreciate that. Mr. Boylan, you indicated that you had received a complaint in regards to this. Has that been addressed?
Yes, it was the same, same issue about preventing access onto Giffen Road. And that's addressed through this DC bylaw. And transportation, transportation also had that same concern, too, and it's been addressed in the bylaw.
Good, thank you. Counselor Palladino.
Well, thank you, Mayor Higgin, and thank you, Mr. Boylan. First, let me say, don't take this as opposition to the bylaw amendment. Any clean industrial uses is fine in my books. But, correct me if I'm wrong, or if I'm missing something here, the applicant wishes to develop a mini storage, an RV storage facility, which is defined as freight and storage, okay? And none of these uses are permitted or discretionary currently in the IB district, right?
Correct, yes.
So why the direct control designation? I wonder if we don't complicate things sometimes too much with this direct control tool. I'm wondering if it wouldn't be easier to do a text amendment and just insert freight and storage as a discretionary or permitted use in, in the current IB district.
I will add, Mayor Higgin, answer that.
So that's a good question, Counselor Palladino. Freight and storage, in many cases, is not as aesthetically pleasing as this particular development is. That's the primary reason that it is located in general industrial, not IB. So the IB district is used as a buffer between commercial and residential uses, and so that's why we have freight and storage in general industrial, and we do not include it within the IB. So it's because being industrial storage oftentimes not as neat and clean as this particular development is.
Thanks, and I'm not trying to toss roadblocks into today's application. I just, I just wondered why we use, well, you seem to use a lot of DC all the time. And that's just a comment. I mean, if you have, if you have something.
No, we don't disagree with you. We have looked at uses in terms of whether they fit in IB or IG, but the complaints we would probably get from adjacent land uses moving that into the IB make us cautious, so, in, in terms of this situation.
Counselor Carlson.
Thanks, Mayor Higgin. Through you again to Mr. Boylan if I can. Tyson, or Mr. Boylan, you did say that the access is addressed in, in the bylaw.
Yeah.
And I'm just, just for me, it's number 10 site access. It says, "Vehicle access to from the site shall be located on the west side." But it isn't saying only shall, or it doesn't preclude Giffen Road. Am I reading too much into that?
It doesn't, but it does say that it shall be located on the west side of the parcel from 32nd Street North.
But it doesn't say only.
It doesn't say only, no.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions, hearing none, I now declare the public hearing closed. This matter may be decided later this afternoon following the public hearing. Thank you. All right, we'll go into a bylaw, just 7.1.1. It's been quite some time since we've heard this, bylaw 6352, a land use bylaw amendment for 3266 Giffen Road North, 3222 Giffen Road North, 3417 32nd Street North, and 3373 32nd Street North. Be resolved that bylaw 6351, a bylaw to provide the closing of a portion of Plan 180 LK 26th Street South, be given a second reading. And this, do I have a mover for this? Counselor Middleton-Hope moves this. Any questions? Debate? And in closing, Counselor Middleton-Hope is called, called for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. And for a third reading, be resolved that bylaw 6351, a bylaw to provide the closing of a portion of Plan 180 LK 26th Street South, be given third reading, and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same. Counselor Middleton-Hope? Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. Next to have a resolution from Counselor Carlson, NMAX... Oh. All right, going back, Counselor Carlson, NMAX Center Parking Update 8.1.3. Be resolved that council receive as information the NMAX Center Parking Update as information and proceed with option one as directed by council on August 24, 2021. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. As we heard at SPC, there were several options presented to us. I believe it's appropriate that the full reports go public and we proceed as we've been communicating to our community all along, so that there's no further misunderstanding. But I know that my colleagues at the committee had some desires to explore further options, and so I think there may be a, an amendment forthcoming, so I will, I will wait.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt-Rempel.
So, okay, not the amendment yet. So I'm just wondering if we can entertain an amendment. Part of option three that we discussed was also looking at a, some revenue generating opportunities, where we looked at building a, an inventory of assets throughout the city that people could take a look at and we could solicit sponsorships for. And I'm wondering if I could get the city manager to sort of outline that a little bit as, as we've chatted about it?
Certainly, yeah. So option three, one of the things, you know, if it was, if it was the will of council, is we could proceed with that option and develop a sponsorship framework policy, and while that policy's being developed, potentially report back to council on anything that might come to light during that process, should council wish to proceed.
So what I'd like to do with this is certainly add to this that we look at putting together a policy as well as an inventory of assets available for sponsors, and then have that move forward as well.
The amendment, the amendment further be resolved that council, direct administration proceed with investigating a city sponsorship program?
Yeah, including the development of a sponsorship policy and inventory of assets available for sponsorship.
All right. And Mr. Resterson, you captured that?
Mayor Higgin, well, that's being wordsmithed. Without, if there's no objection, I'd accept that as a, as a friendly amendment, because I think the discussion in committee was that we shouldn't be exclusive in our options. Option one is the one we've been proceeding with, but if there are opportunities, not just to defer or reduce or eliminate costs for parking to our residents, not just for the NMAX, but for other facilities or other opportunities in town, I think we should be exploring those. And so I, I would be very in favor of exploring this, the sponsorship opportunities throughout our community, so. I would accept that as a friendly if there's no objection.
I'm looking around. That should be accepted as a friendly. I do have a question for the mover. If we have and proceed with option one, so this is not investigate, this is to proceed with option one, and to me, if we look at option one, it's, it may be a little counter if we've got option one and we're also investigating option three, we're proceeding while we're investigating number three. Can you help me understand why we would say proceed with option one?
Because presently, we are proceeding with option one. That was the option that was approved in the previous cycle to implement the parking. To do away with that would cause budget implications. It would cause mass communication to residents, or residents, sponsors, neighbors, renters, etc., about what we're actually doing. We're, we're down this path. This was the, the option that council's already approved, is to proceed with option one. This is just confirming it. But to look at option three, there are possibilities to eliminate or reduce those costs throughout the city, not just for the NMAX, but for other areas of our community as well. And I think it just makes good sense to proceed with option three and option one at the same time.
Counselor Middleton-Hope?
Yeah, I'm just concerned in regards to eliminating option two as well. I'd just like to have a, a couple of moments to review each one of the options again.
Is that a motion to, to table till the end of the meeting? Yeah, oh, okay. If I can maybe remind that we did have three options in front of council. One was to proceed with the, the plan that was already in place and we were moving forward with. That's what's on the table, which is for paid parking for users of the NMAX. So if you drive your car into the NMAX, you pay for parking. Option two was to add it, I believe, onto ticket fees. So whether you walked down or took the bus or car pooled or got dropped off, you were paying for parking whether you used parking or not. Option three was to try and find a kind sponsor in our community to say, "We'll pay for the parking for everyone for here on in if you slap a sign up for us." And so those were the three options presented, and so what we're doing now is saying, proceed with the paid parking for the user pay, but also explore ways we could reduce those costs.
So I didn't understand it, that it was sponsorship to offset the cost of parking. It's sponsorship in general to offset overall operating costs of the NMAX Center. I see that as quite distinct.
Right, the options presented were about the parking, and so they were, what was presented was we could, we could search for sponsorships to offset the cost of parking, because that's all we were discussing, was the parking at that moment. There are always other opportunities for sponsorships for the NMAX, for any of our facilities, and that's what I believe the amendment, I don't want to speak for deputy mayor, but I believe deputy mayor's amendment is to say, "That's a great idea. Let's explore those, get an inventory, build a policy and a framework, and bring that back to council so that we can go full force with that in our community."
And it effectively, through this motion, it effectively eliminates option two, which was the surcharge?
On the tickets.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, with that, I see no further questions. Start debate. Deputy, oh.
Quick question, just, just so I understand, if, if option number three here, if we find a way, can, can option number one be eliminated? Is that a possibility in this year? Is that a possibility to say, "Okay, we don't need number one"?
Well, you know what, and that's, and that's why I had, for me to reply, why I had the question was, could we have investigate, not, you know, implement, but, Mr. Burley?
So Mr. Galucci can add to it if he wants, but you could choose option three exclusively. Option three will take time to generate revenue, so that ties into option one, where there is some immediacy to it. There is a $342,000 budget pressure associated, so option one is there. Option three will ideally or theoretically grow over time, and that's the framework. And that's also where I mentioned, just to clarify, while that policy's being developed, say some options came to light in short order, Mr. Galucci would report back with those directly to say, "While we're working on this, here's some things that have come to light."
Good, thank you.
And a question for Mr. City Manager, if we're on questions, if I could ask this. We would do it similar, parking as we currently have in other areas in the community. It would be the paid parking option for option one, correct?
I don't have the exact specifics, Kim, if you want.
I, I can, no, wait in there. Through the chair, it would be very similar. It would have the same pay kiosk, so you'd park your car and then you would either use the app on your phone or you can go to the actual pay center. The pay center has already been purchased as we were moving forward with this. We put it on pause in January, where there was more debate at council. And the reason why we need to have a decision sooner than later is so we can put out the proper communication to the public, to have them informed that we are moving forward with this parking plan. with this parking plan.
Okay, and I brought this up before, and maybe you can help me better understand this. And I've seen communities that have done this, and their parking meters, everybody is showing up. We've got 4,000 or 5,000 people showing up at the NMAX for an event, and you've got, I hope, 3,000 parking meters because a few minutes per. I've seen it where it's 45 minutes late, people because you're trying, everyone's trying to pay parking at the same time. I'm not going an hour and a half earlier, and we're going to put through 5,000 people on a few machines. It just won't work, period. I've seen it, and I'm just, if we're going this route, we're throwing away dollars, and I just, I didn't know that that's, will be the case. I say no because I've seen this. No one's going to show up. You show up 10 minutes before a game or before an event, or 15 minutes, and again, 5,000 people trying to pay for parking, or 3,000 if you're coming with others, whatever that may look like. So I've just, have you looked into this? I guess I'll turn it to a question. Have you looked into that concern?
Through the chair, I believe Kim has worked with transportation and everybody on this, and that is part of the reason why we also use the same system as the rest of the city. So then if you already have the app because you're paying in other areas of the city, then you can do that. But it is something that we are cognizant of, and as we go through this, we'll have to make sure there is enough pay kiosks as well.
There's minimal paid kiosks throughout the community, just downtown. We know that these 5,000 people don't always, I wish they were all shopping the downtown area, but are going to have to learn this process and be at a kiosk for 10 minutes. Okay, that's fine, as long as it's been looked into, that's fine. Councilor Middleton-Ho.
Again, and I've raised this issue with Mr. Galucci, I've raised this issue in this council chamber before, this doesn't consider the impact of people trying to park elsewhere and the impact on surrounding businesses, the cost of signage, the cost of parking control. These are substantial costs that are all added on to what kinds of revenue we're going to be receiving, and I don't see a discussion on that. And quite candidly, by voting for this motion, which specifically identifies Option 1, which is going to the parking kiosks, there's no discussion in regards to the potential fallout and/or the additional costs that are raised as a result of it. So my question then would be directed at Mr. Galucci. Mr. Galucci, where are we with regards to this discussion?
I think we direct to city manager or designate if that's, because I think the city manager had a...
Here you go.
Actually, Kim, go ahead. I'm going to weigh in on the first part. Was, you know, we hear you loud and clear as far as, and I've experienced that pain elsewhere of trying to pay for parking, is the bottleneck piece that happens. So, you know, hearing you is there's clearly a communication strategy for if you're using the app to pay in advance instead of trying to show up at a machine and be the 52nd person in line waiting to pay. So there's some pieces there that clearly need to be worked through and communicated in advance, and sometimes for the first, you know, let's say it's a game, couple of games, not everybody got around to that, so I think there's a piece there. And then beyond that, into the costs and so forth, I'll let Kim speak to that.
Yeah, thank you for the question. We have looked quite a bit at the different implementing, how we would implement it, how we'd operate and those costs, and they've all been kind of taken into account. The goal isn't that people, I'll just go back to being the process of how people would, so people could use the app, will we be encouraging them to use the city app? They also will have some kiosks both inside and outside. You won't have to pay immediately. You'll have a good half hour to an hour to pay and be able to, you know, so you can do it casually or do it on the app quite easily. By doing it that way, we have looked at a number of different options. It allows people to park, it doesn't back up traffic, it allows people to get into the building cleanly. We're able to work with a number of other different groups, and we have talked to like regulatory services about how that would impact the communities and make sure that we would be able to change some of those. Most of our communities are permitted around us already, and then we could extend those times for those permits. So those are some of the things we would enact and operate if we went with Option 1. The other costs we have considered, we will have like cameras and flashes, we'll be able to do this quite effectively with different labor. And, yeah, I think it'll be able to flow within the cost structure. We believe we would be able to generate somewhere around 400 to 425,000 with costs around the 50,000 to 80,000 mark, depending on how many events and the variables of different events.
Candidly, Mr. Galucci, I'm not convinced. And have you spoken to Mr. Murray about the potential impact on his lot and his property that's adjacent to the NMAX Center? Because I can tell you, he's talked to me, and he's quite upset by the fact that what we're doing by creating a parking, paid for parking onsite is it's going to push people out into the community. I don't live over there, but I can only imagine what this is going to look like, and I can certainly imagine that this is going to create some significant challenges for Mr. Murray and his business that's associated with this, or adjacent to this, rather. So how are we going to address that? Telling me that it's going to generate $400,000 in revenue, I'm afraid is just not going to cut it.
Through the chair, if I may respond to this, we are acting on council's direction, and this is, the previous council did direct us to move forward with this. When we checked in with this council, we did hear some of these concerns, and that's why we are bringing other options forward. So again, if the council does not want us to move forward with the paid parking, that is council's right, and we would act upon that with no direction, though our current direction from council is to implement the paid parking to offset the costs.
Don't misunderstand me, Mr. Fox, I'm in favor of paid parking. I'm simply not in favor of Option 1. And I'm not sure that the costs for implementing Option 1 alone are sufficient. I'm not sure that we've taken all of those into consideration and the potential impacts. That's where my concern is. It's not about paid parking. I think we do need to implement paid parking. It's just the way in which we're doing it.
You are correct, though. There will be some impact, there is no question. People will, like our experience and when we talk to other places and other establishments, you will have a pushback initially. People will try to park on the streets, park in other locations. There's not much we can do other than make sure that we have those permit parkings, make sure that we've talked to the people around us, our neighbors, like the college and Murray's, and just prepare them and do what we need to, to work with them to protect their property. But over time, people will then, what we found is, or what we found from our research was that over time, people will then stop parking on the street and go back to the parking lot. So we established, we initially thought that 60% would normally park, and then it'll move back up to 80 and 85% usually is what the experience other people have had, and we believe that would be the same. But you are right, there will be an initial impact that we will try to limit. I have talked to Mr. Murray, and I think he said his preference, preference is another option, but we would work with him to, and seeing how we could mitigate anything on his property.
Right, so next we have Acting Mayor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. I'd like to actually go back to basics and think about the problem we're trying to solve, and I may need some help with my memory here. If I remember the conversation about why we were looking at parking, it's about the parking lot itself and the fact that we need to repave that parking lot. Can someone confirm, is that correct? Is that one of the reasons we looked at this even initially, is that we have infrastructure that needs replacement?
If I can add to that, too, is a similar question I had. Thank you, Acting Mayor Croson. It was to replace that paving, was the first time we were doing paid parking, but it had switched since to revenue for NMAX. That was a question I had as well. I don't know if Mr. City Manager, if you...
I'm looking at Mr. Fox here. I thought, I had understood the paving was separate, this was strictly an operating cost. I know there is paving work that is scheduled and planned to happen, and Ms. Trent can weigh in on that piece, but I believe this was related to an operating cost. Mr. Fox?
I would actually suspect, lost this in staff changes, that originally the paid parking was about the infrastructure.
And through the chair, I believe also, the discussion also changed a while back when we were going through the process on how the NMAX would be operated, and it was switched to how we would reduce the tax support for the overall site. Whether or not that was, I believe before that, there were some discussions around the paving of the parking lot and the overall capital costs. There is some money in life cycles, but it does not cover the full cost of paving the parking lot. But it was also just about the general tax, trying to alleviate the tax burden of the NMAX Center. And with that, Kim's been here longer than I have, so I'll let him add to the history before I got here.
Thank you. Yes, initially, there was, and you have to go back a few years now, initially it was talked about the parking lot replacement. However, during the time of looking at 10% reductions in that, the parking lot became part of, well, it goes back to the KPMG report, which recommended moving to paid parking to reduce operating, which then went to the 10% reductions, which is where this was passed, and that's why it exists today. It is strictly intended to reduce operating costs. It's a revenue generator to reduce operating costs.
So how is the parking lot being paved then? Are we moving forward with parking lot repaving?
I can speak to that. Thank you, Councilor Croson, for the question. So, and I would just reinforce what Mr. Galucci outlined. My understanding from my experience in these discussions with council is that it stemmed around operating model and revenue generation associated with KPMG recommendations and any subsequent decisions around operatorship opportunities or subsequent variations in operatorship models. That was certainly my recollection. At the time of those discussions, the notion that there was additional paving requirements did come up in terms of how we may want to consider these various options. With respect to the forthcoming plans for paving, we are looking to issue an RFP to actually complete the geotechnical and engineering studies to evaluate what this potentially would look like, both for the north lot and the west lot. So yes, there is some rehabilitation work that is required to maintain the parking lots, but at this point, we don't have a fulsome estimate in terms of what the expectation is on total, all installed costs.
So if we looked at the sponsorship opportunity that's being suggested and maybe looked at that for the repaving costs, knowing it would take a few years, is there a possibility, and I know this is just rhetorical, that those two could line up? That the time that it takes to do the sponsorship package could be the same amount of time that would be needed to raise the money for repaving?
I can answer that through the chair. If council wanted to set a reserve level, once Mrs. Trent's team is done with what the overall cost would be, we could do a reserve off of the sponsorship dollars to make sure that we have adequate funds to pay for the parking.
So it throws another thing into the conversation that we're having at council because that repaving has to be done as well. There are two options. So we could look at the sponsorship option for the repaving and then look at the charging parking, whether or not we want to do for revenue generation, and keep those two quite separate. Just an idea that council may want to consider.
If I may, Councilor Croson, just one, add one other piece to that. As part of the contemplation for future paving requirements, it's also being evaluated for opportunities to look at green energy as part of that from a grant perspective. We are looking at other models in other municipalities that have employed covered parking with solar energy elements to it as well. So I would just want to inform council fulsomely that there is other options we are considering from a funding perspective as it relates to the rehabilitation work, but again, want to understand the expectation and estimation of total cost, and then from there, look at opportunities to engineer it and design it in such a way that would potentially leverage future grant dollars as well.
No, I appreciate that. It's just in my mind, it's a very different conversation between replacing our own infrastructure and revenue generation. Those are quite different concepts. Thank you.
Councilor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. So just, since we're asking rhetorical questions, could we remove the parking lot, put it in green space and get everyone to ride CityLink? Just rhetorical. Mr. Galucci, how many stalls are contemplated being paid stalls, available? Because I know some are already out for staff or hurricanes.
You're right, because we, 1,610 stalls currently. We do, we set aside 40 for the hurricanes under contract. We do have some VIP ones, and we do have some other that we are required for, not just staff, but there are contracted services that require that space. So in the end, it's roughly around, and it varies depending on the event. Hockey is a little higher, if some events are a little lower, but it's right around the 1,325 parking spots, between 1,300 and 1,350.
Because we've been talking about 5,000 people parking there, and we know that they can't. I live in the neighborhood, and I know that when there's a very popular concert or a very popular hockey club playing there, there's parking in front of my house already. And that's not because of, it might be a challenge that there's not enough parking stalls, but it also is the fact that those of us who go there regularly know that sometimes it takes longer than the game to get out of the parking lot. So if you park around the corner, you can walk across the street and get home in five minutes. So that, those challenges are already there now, but there are only 1,300 and change parking stalls onsite right now, available for paid parking.
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, open for debate. I see no further questions. Councilor Carlson?
I think we've had a lot of good debate on this. I just appreciate the fulsome report and the options that were presented. I do believe that it's incumbent on us to continue with the plan that was in place because if we don't go forward with the operating model that has been presented, we're going to be faced with quite a deficit in our budget, because this was all budgeted on the 10% reduction, the revenue reductions. And so if we don't proceed, we're going to see a huge deficit. But I do also really applaud the fact that council was open to exploring other options. The sponsorship model, I think, is one that, not applicable to NMAX, but to any of our facilities or services in town. If we can find these sponsorship possibilities and reduce costs to residents, I'm all for it. So I'd like my colleagues' support.
New debate, Councilor Middleton-Ho.
And I appreciate that from Councilor Carlson because he always provides an interesting perspective. I will not be voting in favor of this, and the primary reason is, I am certainly cognizant of the Mormon church, the martial arts facility, the soccer center, Mr. Murray's business, and residences who are going to be adversely impacted by establishing kiosks on the property and charging fees up to $5 to park. I think it's a direction that we do not need to go in, and we should not go in. I am absolutely in favor of working on strategies to generate revenue. There are other options that are available, those are not presented. So that's the reason why I will be voting against this motion. Thank you.
Councilor Dorick.
I will be supporting the resolution because if we don't have the ability to reduce the operating costs of the NMAX Center, then by necessary implication, taxes will have to be increased accordingly to make up that shortfall.
Councilor Parker?
Thank you very much. And everyone brings expertise around this table, some bring a legal mind, some bring a policing mind. I think I bring a bit of a marketing mind, and I won't be supporting the idea of the kiosks. I just, for all the reasons that Councilor Milton-Ho said, I visualize this actually seeing each parking stall with a little sign saying sponsored, for example, this spot is sponsored by Bridge City Chrysler, or another spot sponsored by Davis, or another spot. And I can see one person saying, I'm going to buy up all the blocks here so I can sponsor all the parking stalls. And I can see even someone saying, you park your Dodge here, you're entered into winning something for your oil change or something like that. So I'm thinking outside the box, and I think a lot of people would jump all over that as businesses. So you keep the money onsite, then you also keep the sponsorship onsite, too, in that it's driven, it's paid for, and it's... When you want to sell some advertising on a Parks bench or something like that, to pay for something at NMAX, there's no real connection. But I think if you can keep it on site, it adds integrity to the fundraising goal as well. So for that reason, I just, that's one of the ideas I threw out there. But I know Mr. Glucci has lots of ideas. I know he'll deliver as well. But I can't support the idea of the kiosk at this time. Thank you.
Counselor Schmidt Rempel, our deputy mayor, Schmidt Rempel?
I will be supporting this resolution, in part because I added the last half of it.
Two for supporting the law.
Exactly. But no, we do, we need something to get us there to that sponsor opportunity. And once we build that sponsorship, that asset inventory for the city of Lethbridge, perhaps we will be able to find a sponsor for the NMAX parking lot. And then we can start looking at eliminating parking fees. But at this time, this does pair up option one and option three quite nicely. I thank Counselor Carlson for working with me on that. And I think this is the best of both worlds moving forward. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. I will not be supporting this. I just, well, there's, sorry, 5,000 people parking, if it's 1,200 cars, 1,300 cars, whatever that looks like, coming in. There's just, it won't happen. I just, I'm quite confident of that, but I know we can say it's going to take a few years. We'll figure it out. We'll get the app. Grandma's going to pop on that app. We'll get her, we will be fine with this in time. It's not going to happen. And you know what? We're going to lose as well. We're going to lose when it comes to our hockey team there. This is a community team, the Hurricanes. People are not going to pay for the ticket and pay the additional $5, whatever it might look like. We have the opportunity for sponsorship. I really like what Counselor Parker had mentioned. There's ways. Let's think outside the box. We don't need to charge the additional parking. They will find their ways parking around the area. I've seen it. You go up to a Flames game, you've got people selling parking in their own driveways, and it's just, it's a security issue. It's a liability issue. Don't like it 100 ways from center. So for that, I just will not be supporting this. And back to the mover.
Thank you, Mayor Hagan. I appreciate the discussion and debate. Again, I just remind my colleagues, have you been anywhere else? And they all have paid parking, not just outside of our community, but in our community, right next door to this facility. If you go to the college, you pay for parking. You go to the university, you pay for parking, because they know there are costs. I also want to remind this council that if this fails, we have a huge hole in our budget that is tax dollars that we have to find. This was a way to reduce the burden on our taxpayers as a user-pay system. If you park your car there, you pay. So I think it just makes, it's common sense. Some of the concerns, if you did read the report from Mr. Glucci and our administration, a lot of the concerns that were raised were discussed. They knew that there was going to be some issues, and it's going to take some time to get buy-in. People do have that buy-in eventually. I know that I do. When I go to the college, I don't park at the NMAX and run to the college. I go to the college and throw in a couple bucks. And if I can do it, Grandma can do it. The app isn't that hard, and the machine certainly isn't that hard. The concerns of the neighborhood parking, many of them have already been addressed. Most of these neighborhoods, because they're next to the college, have those permitted times. And Mr. Glucci said, we're going to have to work with those and extend those times, because, yeah, they shouldn't have the extra pressure. When we talk about the Mormon Church and the car lots, there are already rules in place. I've seen the signs, no parking. So those rules are already in place. I think, living in a bit of a dream world, to say that this is going to force everyone to park in the church parking lot. Well, once they get the first ticket or towed, they're not going to do that anymore. The same with on private parking. We have those rules in place. Folks, I think this makes sense. I hope I have your support on this. Otherwise, the next conversation we're going to have is where we find the hole in our budget and how we plug that. So I'll ask for your support. This is in process for a long time. I appreciate the options that are coming forward. I really appreciate the sponsorship discussion, because there's a way to defer, or hopefully deflate or reduce these costs in future. But for right now, this is the way that I believe we need to go. Thank you.
I do see that Counselor Croson, you came in after here. Did you still want to, is that okay, mover? If you, Counselor Croson?
Yes, sorry, I did want to be part of the debate, with my hand must count up a little late. I would love some of you to read a copy of The High Cost of Free Parking. I talked earlier about the unintended consequences of decisions we make and how it affects long term. If people don't want to pay for parking at NMAX, hey, we have a transit system. You could ride that, and then you won't have to pay for parking. There is a lot of things that when we make a decision in short term, that we don't reason a long term impact, and parking is one of those. And while I, you know, would love to save people every bit of money we can, sometimes a small charge, the long term impact saves all of us as a community in a long way. And I know there are ways to figure this out. You can't go to the exhibition most of the times without paying for parking. That, too, has community around it that is affected. And I know our administration is smart enough to figure this out. So I will be supporting this, because I can see this, again, in the larger picture about what free cost, what free parking actually costs us in the long run if we do not look at things like this.
And I think that's Counselor Carlson's closing remarks. And we will do that by roll call. Madam Clerk?
There we go. Counselor Palladino? Counselor Parker? Acting Mayor Croson? Sorry, you're on mute.
In favor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Schmidt Rempel?
In favor.
Mayor Hagan?
Opposed.
Counselor Campbell?
In favor.
Counselor Carlson?
In favor.
Counselor Dotick?
In favor.
Counselor Middleton Hope?
Matters. Opposed.
Carries five to four.
Great debate. Thank you very much. I am going to turn the chair over to Deputy Mayor, as I have another meeting at 4:30. Yeah, just a little bit. So thank you very much, and we'll catch you on the return. Oh, sorry.
You're good. Yep, go next. While I move over. Yep, go ahead. Members of council? If I could have your attention, City Clerk's office has made an error, so I have to fess up. The bylaw that you passed that was associated with the public hearing was the wrong bylaw. We did that one last week. I apologize. We'll have to rescind that one, and we'll have to do the right one. My apologies. So we'll do that now. Thank you. The bylaw for the public hearing that we did, we had the wrong number and the wrong names. So we will rescind that, please. I apologize. Thank you.
Maybe we won't rescind it. Maybe we like that one better.
So a motion to rescind bylaw, the reading today of bylaw 6351, second and third reading, and then to pass bylaw 6352. And Deputy Mayor will read it. Yeah, okay, separate motions? Okay. So we need a motion to rescind? So we need for second and third reading? For both? Okay, so can I do that in one motion? Okay. So could I please have a motion to rescind the second and third reading of bylaw 6351, a bylaw to provide the closing of a portion of land plant, or what we had proposed as an amendment to land use bylaw 6300, 3222 Giffen Road North, 3266 Giffen Road North, 3373? Just today's reading. Today's reading. Just today's, not last week, it's just today's. So could we have a motion to rescind that, please? Counselor Carlson? All in favor? Excellent. Thank you. It has to be two thirds? All right. So now we have a motion for the second. Do we do, can we do them together or separate? Okay. So second reading, be it resolved that bylaw 6352, proposed amendment to land use bylaw 6300, 3222 Giffen Road North, 3266 Giffen Road North, 3373 32nd Street North, 3417 32nd Street North. Could I have that motion, please? Second reading. So Counselor Palladino? All in favor? And for the third reading, be it resolved that bylaw 6352, proposed amendment to land use bylaw 6300, 3222 Giffen Road North, 3266 Giffen Road North, 3373 32nd Street North, 3417 32nd Street North, be given third reading, and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same. Could I have that motion, please? Counselor Palladino? Second, third, okay. All in favor? Thank you very much. So that's cleaned up. All right. We are moving on to items under administrative, administration submissions. We have, item 10.1, Council Action Plan Q1 2022 Report. Does anybody have any questions with regards to that submission? Acting Mayor Croson, I have you as the mover on this. Be it resolved that council receive the Council Action Plan Q2 2022 as attachment one as for information. Acting Mayor Croson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We're early in our council years, but this is to get us started. Every quarter, you will see a report on our council action plan, which will bring to council, as well as the community, what we have achieved. So this is the first one. As I said, you can expect it quarterly moving on from now. And this is for information, but also to keep the community aware of what council is up to and what we are achieving. With that, I'll call the question.
Question, question's been called? All in favor? Excellent. Thank you very much. Moving on to 10.2 from Counselor Dotick. I have a resolution for the integrity commission rescission. Be it resolved that council rescind the following portions of previously passed resolutions. One, the portion of the directed resolutions of April 20, 2021, on the consent agenda pertaining to the recommendation of Audit Committee to pursue the establishment of an integrity commissioner and proceed with the implementation plan. And two operative clauses, 1, 3, 4, and 5 of the resolution approving the establishment of integrity commissioner passed at council on February 15, 2022. Counselor Dotick?
Yes, this is actually a clean-up resolution. As you may recall, there was first reading of the bylaw and putting in, or implementing integrity commissioner was defeated. So, but there was other resolutions that had flowed from that previously, and the city solicitor's office pointed out. And to clean it up, this resolution is in place, so it asks for council's support.
But anybody have any questions? Self-explain.
Then I would call the question.
Question's been called? All in favor? Thank you very much. Any opposed? Okay, so we're moving. Do we have any city council updates? Nope, seeing none. We're going to move into our confidential reports. So from Counselor Middleton Hope, we have contract negotiation. It's 14.1. Be it resolved that city council direct that the closed meetings, discussions, reports, documents, and attachments with respect to the contract negotiations remain confidential pursuant to section 23, Local Public Body Confidences, and 24, Advice from Officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, and direct administration to negotiate a fair and reasonable contract with Alberta Health Services for EMF services, and take an active role in advocacy with the province using the attached confidential advocacy plan. Counselor Middleton Hope?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So this is, this is an important motion for our community. It asks city council to ensure that we provide support to our fire and EMS services, and the city to negotiate a fair and equitable contract with Alberta Health Services. And this is of peremptory nature in terms of needing to ensure that a fulsome contract be identified and put into place at the earliest possible opportunity, and I would ask for council's support of this particular motion. Anything else? Good. Any discussion? Debate? I know.
We'll call the question?
Okay.
All in favor? Any opposed? Excellent. 14.2, Land Sale. Counselor Carlson, be it resolved that city council direct to the closed meetings, discussions, reports, documents, and attachments with respect to the land sale remain confidential pursuant to section 23, Local Public Body Confidences, and 24, Advice from Officials and the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, and further be it resolved that council approve the land sale of 0.005 hectares, 0.01 acres, more or less of a portion of 26th Street South Road Plan 180 LK, 2 Dunlop Ventures Limited, with the following sales term purchase price of $660, closing date June 30, 2022. Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Due to a recent road closure, this plot of land has become available and has been offered for sale, and I'd ask for my colleagues' support.
Any questions? Debates? Call the question? All in favor? And that's carried. Item 14.3, Human Resources Matter. Counselor Palladino? Be it resolved that city council direct the closed meetings, discussions, reports, documents, and attachments with respect to human resources matter remain confidential pursuant to section 17, Harmful to Personal Privacy, and 24, Advice from Officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Counselor Palladino? Question's been called? All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that's carried. And that's all we've got today. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please? Could I have a motion to adjourn, please? Counselor Dotick, thank you very much. That's our meeting.